Good evening. Call to order, please. Could everyone please take a seat and come to quiet?
Meeting time.
Could we have the roll call, please? Weston.
Yes, Mayor. Mayor Stix.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Francina.
Here.
Councilmember Rule.
Here.
Councilmember Lang.
Here.
Councilmember Whitman.
Here.
Thank you, Weston, and welcome, everyone, to the November fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-three meeting of the Ojai City Council. Would you please say the pledge, Weston?
Yes, Mayor.
Thank you.
Welcome, community. Everyone, please stand. Place your right hand over your heart. Ready to begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much, Weston. And before we have approval of the agenda, I'm going to be reading a short statement. Oh, thank you. Okay. Last night, our interim city manager, Mark Scott, resigned. We thank him for his service and all his hard work on behalf of our community. We are grateful for his time here and wish him all the best in his new adventure. As mayor, I have appointed Assistant City Manager Carl Alameda— Hi, Carl. Thank you—to be Acting City Manager, subject to ratification by the council at the meeting on November twenty-eighth. On November twenty-eighth, the council will consider the next steps for the city manager recruitment, including the next interim city manager. I would like to reassure our community, my council colleagues, and our wonderful city staff that I am confident in the continued operations of the city. Our strong staff is the root of Ojai's success, and I look forward to continuing to work together to maintain and improve our community. I'm grateful for the staff's service and commitment to Ojai and all the hard work in the chambers, behind the scenes, and out in the town. Thank you, Mr. Alameda, for stepping in as our Acting City Manager. And with that, is there a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll move to approve.
And a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Wonderful. And Mr. City Attorney, do you have a report out from last night's closed session?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Last night, the city council met in closed session and considered four of the five items. They considered items, one, regarding anticipated litigation related to a transactional occurrence, the city's consideration of a pending housing development proposed by Cabrillo Economic Development Corporation for three eighteen to three twenty Bryant Street. Second item, two, consideration of a pending housing development proposed by Ojai Bungalows LP Greenhawk LLC, The Becker Group, Inc., for three twelve West Eliso, four twelve Mallory Way, one oh seven North Ventura, and three oh four South Montgomery, and five ten East Ojai. And third, anticipated litigation related to pending housing development proposed by Ojai Kuyama Church LLP, Ojai Maricopa Church One LLP, and Ojai Maricopa Church Two LLP for fourteen hundred and fourteen fifty Maricopa Highway. The council also considered existing litigation, the case name Sibley Ojai v. City of Ojai, Ventura County Superior Court case number stated as on the agenda. For those four items, the council provided direction to staff and this myself, the city Acting City Manager and the Community Development Director, and our outside housing counsel, Sunny Sotani with the firm Elchern Winter, to bring back information to the council regarding the litigation risks and options inherent in those developments, and to continue the city's processing of all of those development applications as required by law without delay, and to open dialogue with the developers on each of the applicable projects regarding potential future options. The council provided direction in the existing litigation case to proceed as required by law. And on item five, the council deferred consideration of that one regarding public employee appointment and public employment related to the city manager and interim city manager to the November twenty-eighth meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Summers. All right, we have—we'll move on to presentations. We have a presentation from Kathy Nolan and Betsy Van Light of the Ojai Valley Green Coalition, and they will present on the Community Service Grant Project: City Hall Campus Master Plan Year-One Community Engagement Report. So thank you very much, Betsy and Kathy, for being here. Take it away.
Councilmembers, staff—well, you just introduced us, so I don't have to say my name over again—but we are here representing the Ojai Valley Green Coalition, and we want to thank you for the opportunity to present and show the outcomes of our community engagement portion of the one-year for the master planning of the Eight Acres City Hall campus. And this was through the past City of Ojai Community Service Grant Program from two thousand and twenty-two. And I'm sure all of you received our report, and there's a lot of details in here, so tonight we're just going to give you kind of a broad overview, and then, of course, if there's any questions afterwards. But the services we intended to provide in this three-to-four-year project were a source and access for information, functioning systems for education and outreach, and a place for all of this to happen. After conversations with city leadership, we understood that our community needed better access to information about how they can take impactful action toward greater resilience and a regenerative way of life here in our valley. We proposed that we could create a hub or center, including a coalition of our local nonprofit organizations to optimize, collaborate, and to create synergies, and that by establishing a location on the City Hall campus, whether in the help of Ojai Building—which I know we continue to ask for, and we did ask for a lot—and on the site, as well as creating a virtual calendar, either on the city's website or our Green Coalition website, and through community engagement and input, we would collect information as to what was needed to create the hub or center, share that with council, in the hopes of moving forward and applying that information to support a master plan for the City Hall campus. Your fiscal support through the grant allowed the community to actively participate in the community engagement process for Phase One Year-One. So our funding was just for that first-year community engagement. We achieved this by, one, we had—we conducted an effective collaboration training, and that was more internal. But the reason we did that—it was to kind of create the ground rules of how we would and could effectively engage with the community, especially like in running our workshops. And most notably, I think, the one statement that kept coming forward was—to acknowledge that everyone has a voice. So everyone who got to partake in our surveys, our site surveys, and our workshops, no matter what their opinions were, we took them down, and we wanted to make sure that they were heard. So we also conducted—excuse me—conducted an online survey that included a series of questions, and there were even spaces for people to write in creatively whatever they wanted to. So it wasn't just like a yes or no, or pick A, B, C, or D. There was an option for them to provide input, and that ran through July thirty-first of two thousand and twenty-three. We then provided group and private site tours of the Eight Acre Campus, which not only included walking the site, but sharing background and historical information and having a Q and A kind of—and social time with whoever attended. We then conducted a series of three World Cafe-style workshops where participants were provided a broad-scope question and then worked together in groups to answer questions and provide creative input. We then tabulated all of that data to create our final report. Betsy?
That picture that's on the front of the report is a really wonderful whimsical drawing of the Eight Acre property done by our own local artist, Christine Brennan. Shout out to Christine. And I'm going to be talking about the themes. Really, the heart of the report are the emergent themes from all of the input we got. You'll have to look carefully, you know, if you—if you download it or get a print copy. There's wonderful little pictures that kind of exemplify quite a few of the themes. So here's really—in a nutshell, taking all of the comments from survey, from workshop, and from other times that we talked with people as well, what were the things that kept coming up over and over again that kind of fit together? So the first theme is the supporting and connecting to the natural world. We have an amazing campus. We have trees and open land and gardens, and really access for people to be able to do—to connect and to be part of the natural world, and that came up probably more than any other type of comment. Another theme was to repurpose the existing buildings, including the old carriage house. There was a tremendous amount of interest in that old carriage house, and a few of us got to see the inside of it. Using different sections of the site to offer a wide variety of activities. And we do have—I mean, if you look at that site, it is broken up into different areas that lend themselves to different things. So just as a few examples of activities that people brought up, one was definitely pickleball, but there was comments about making art, doing spiritual ceremonies, doing yoga, doing meditation, doing storytelling, a whole range of things that we could do together as a community. One of the themes was inviting youth to be centrally part of everything we did. It was really a hope that this would bring forward children and young people to learn, to be part of things, and even to be in leadership roles. There was a theme of refining and extending the existing paths and trails so that we're better connected within the site, but also connecting potentially all the way to Creek Road or down to Ojai Avenue. And then there were a lot of comments that were about doing a variety of nature-based and sustainability educational activities that truly tap into the richness of the place that we—that we live in. There were many comments. Another theme was about rejuvenating and tending the Demonstration Garden area, which has a long history. And finally, there was definitely a theme about finding ways to better care for those in the tent encampment, which was expanding during the entire time we were doing our work. So in summary, we feel like people were telling us that the city campus property has the potential to be sort of an essential ecological hub for the community of Ojai, a place for children and adults to enjoy and learn about our ecosystem together. Think how fortunate we are to live in a place that has a campus like this, that offers a refuge for humans and non-humans alike. So let's not squander this opportunity. Let's really move forward to bring some of the ideas expressed to fruition. And so Kathy's going to talk about the more practical— what are next steps or recommendations?
All right. So in closing, consider giving the site a descriptive name such as Ojai Ecology Hub. This could be done, you know, many different or numerous ways. You know, the council could do it. We could go out to the community and have a contest or something fun, but it would be nice to give it a name. If you decided you want to move forward, we'd love to get an MOU with the city. We know that the site survey of the entire property needs to be completed and to identify the actual boundaries. Assure that we are in compliance with the Smith-Hops Indeed, so anything that we did on the property would be compliant with that. And then, we did receive a wonderful gift, and we have the whole report included in our report, and that was a tree survey that was donated to the city to the value of about $10,000. All the trees are identified and assessed, and there are actually some hazardous trees that are out on the property, so I'm hoping that the city will take that to the Public Works Department if they haven't, and make sure that they look at that information, and any hazards are addressed, because there are a lot of people, of course, we know, living and using the campus. Another immediate thing would be to start mini projects in the garden, just to keep the community in life. And as Betsy mentioned, we had so many people volunteer that said, you know, hey, I'll dig a hole, or I was a teacher, I could teach a class, but people who actually want to come out and be involved and volunteer. And then, you know, we wrote on there, "Determined and appropriate response to the tent encampment," and I hope thankfully that this has been started. It sounds like we have a really good task force, and the city is trying to figure out some solutions. And then I just wanted to give a big thank you once again to the council, to staff who worked with us while we were doing this project, and to the entire community, for everyone who participated. It all made it happen. So thank you. And then we're open to any questions, if you have any.
Okay. Thank you so much, Kathy and Betsy. We really appreciate it. Thank you for loving our campus so much and putting so much time and attention, and also talking to so many community members. That's beautiful. So thank you. Any questions or comments?
I just wanted to also thank you. I had the opportunity to go to one of the World Cafe events, and it was incredible to be in a room with people brainstorming all the potentialities for that property, and it was really inspiring. And what was interesting was how many of our ideas—even though we were sitting at different tables and all coming from different places—how many of our ideas aligned and related to one another. And I loved the way that you organized that process in addition to the opportunity that you provided for the community itself. So thank you so, so much for your leadership in this effort.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you.
I enjoyed the workshops. I attended.
Yeah, thank you for coming.
Councilmember?
Thank you.
So from what I understand, have you submitted, like, a next steps proposal yet, or what—if we did want to move forward with the mini next steps until we get a better sense of the space and how it's going to play out? What would be—the—would you submit something? Would you like to—I mean, how would we get in dialogue with you about that?
Well, we actually did submit something, and that was—
Which I know you did.
—several months ago. And we actually proposed a couple of things. One, that the city get the survey completed, and we would help orchestrate that with a local survey, because we know who had done the past work. There was that. And then, we actually put in a proposal for a mini grant or a small project, and that would be in the Demonstration Garden. And that would be to keep the community involved and actually to help do some cleanup, which is big. And then just having a presence in the landscape, in the garden, just kind of helps create boundaries and engagement with the community.
But you can tell us, too, if there's a way we should—
Yes.
Sure, exactly.
We can redo something if we needed to. We're flexible.
Well, perhaps we can speak to our Acting City Manager and see if something bubbles up from what you've—what you've proposed, because it would be unfortunate after this years-long work if it were to just sort of dissipate for lack of, you know, activity or engagement or follow-through, even if it were minimal follow-through of just keeping the community that's been built over this last year together. So we can—we can work on that.
We're open to discussion.
Yeah, of course.
We're flexible, so just contact us.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
We will move on to commission reports. We have one from Chair Smitty for the Arts Commission, and then Chair Aikens from the HPC.
Was I first?
You're first.
It's show and tell time. All right. Thank you, guys. Let's have some fun. You know it's going to be upbeat. I have a painting to show you guys.
Okay.
Ooh, I like that.
And if any of you—I was hoping they could maybe put it on the screen, too. Can you see? All right. If you remember your art history class, you remember Mark Chagall. Mark Chagall was a Russian artist, impressionist, a hundred years ago, and moved to Paris early on, but always loved his former Russia. This painting—okay. Mayor Betsy approached me a few months ago and said, "One of the residents in the encampment here outside City Hall had approached her and said, 'I have this beautiful painting that's worth millions, and the original would be.'" And she came a few times, and finally, Betsy said, "Smitty, can you check this out?" You know, I said, "Okay, I'll check it out." So I got a hold of the painter. I'm not going to use her name. I don't have that permission right now. But I researched it a little, got a hold of the painting, and heard the story. This is a print. It was bought at the thrift store, the Help of Ojai Thrift Store, for fifteen dollars, okay? And the owner asked that, you know, "I'd like to sell it and hang it in City Hall, sell it and get some money." So I scheduled through her social worker at Help of Ojai to—he or she or her—their social worker at Help of Ojai to have a look at it. And I immediately—even to a musician I recognized immediately, it was—it was just a print. In fact, when I turned it over, it said Ikea on the back, and I noticed that— And you can still get a Chagall. Always—it's called Flying Over—Flying Over Town, okay? Very impressionist. And it was his—it was his town in what is now Belarus, his hometown. It's a very famous painting. It's in a museum in Moscow right now, and it's one of the most copied, forged paintings that there are as well. So—but I'm curious, because whenever I frame something, I always—whatever used to be in the frame, I leave in the frame in the back. So I opened the back of it, okay? And because I have some Ukrainian war refugees living at my house right now, I recognize Cyrillic and handwritten signature. And—but as I pulled it out, I noted that it wasn't signed on the Chagall. It was just signed on another painting that was underneath it. That's an original artwork. I'm going to show that to you. Oh, this is where I use my gloves. It's mainly for dramata, drama. The signature says Vladimir Makayev, and this is the painting. It's original oil, and I was able to run down the— Can you see it over there? I was able to run down the artist. Hundred dollars. Isn't it delightful? It's called Love Triangle. It's called Love Triangle. It's signed by his name and called Love Triangle in Russian, and it's delightful. A woman with her burrow and her kitty cat, and it's a little love triangle. So I did a little research on the artist. I'm going to put it here for now, and then I can put it on the TV. I did a little research on the artist, and I was able, actually, to find him and contact him. He lives in Crimea, kind of Ukrainian, sort of, right now. And he's a working artist. He's of some renown. He's known for exactly what this is, oil on paper rather than oil on canvas, and he's totally influenced by Chagall. In fact, when I told him—his response—I asked him, "How did we come across this?" You know, he said, "I have no idea. We've had auctions in America," but he's never even been. And he said, "I just want you to let the owner know that I'm honored to share a frame with the great Mark Chagall." So I just wanted to share a little story of art here in Ojai and tell you, my plan was—my hope—I wrote a little pitch to the media, trying to find a journalist or someone in the art world that would get a hold of this, and we'll see what happens. But I would love to get some media attention. I'd love to—it—it needs cleaned and framed properly, and I would like maybe the city to consider doing that, maybe hanging it here or at the museum. And maybe a philanthropist art collector will buy it, and it will certainly help the owner of the painting out a lot. So that's it.
Well, thank you.
And with that, I have earned two minutes.
Thank you, Chair Smitty. Great story.
I have two minutes. Just because the commissioner criteria is on the agenda tonight, I just wanted to offer that I was very—I was very pleased to see that in the draft one that you have now, you gave us on the Arts Commission the flexibility to have five to seven commissioners, and the terms aren't tied to an election cycle. The mayor and a council person, the way you guys select it, will work with the chair to select new members. I just want to talk a little bit about the residency requirement and make a pitch for this a couple of different ways. The arguments that I want to make, just to kind of give some examples.
Just one—this is an agenda item that comes later, Chair Smitty, so can you wait and save your comments until that item comes up, or you want to go home, don't you?
I could do it.
Can you? Yeah, because, you know, we're really supposed to stick to the agenda items when it comes up.
Okay.
If you can wait.
I will do that.
Okay. Thank you.
The only other thing I didn't want to say is that the mural jury met today, and is going to be sending approval for the mural through the mural ordinance to the commission meeting Thursday night. Thursday night, we'll also be having the presentations by the grant applicants, and I hope you or any of you—it's the best meeting of the year that we have, and I hope maybe you'll come to that. So thank you for your time.
Thank you for all you do for us. Thank you. Next, we have Chair Aikens from the Historic Preservation Commission. And thank you for helping our community member, Chair Smitty.
Hello, I'm Brian Aikens. I'm here on a Historic Preservation Commission Chair Report, and I, too, was going to lump the two items together, but I'll be back. So first thing I want—excuse me. First thing I want to do is I do want to congratulate the Green Coalition on the efforts they've done. I went to an early meeting where they put maps, big maps, out on each of the tables, and I went to the maps and I drew three red circles on those maps. On the Carriage House, the Pickleball Court, and downtown city, and said, "These are landmarked. Other than that, enjoy yourselves," and they have just done a fabulous job. I am—I was talking to Kathy beforehand. I will tell you that the historic Carriage House barn is mentioned amongst their own reporting and amongst the people that were participating in it. Carriage House barn, as was mentioned, twelve times. I like it when potential landmarks are mentioned multiple times. Also, as was mentioned, glad that the mayor and others were able to go to the tours. We were able to go to—to the spooky haunted—not haunted—Carriage House, and so that's wonderful, too. Grateful in the report that, as I said, the Carriage House was mentioned several times. In page eight, it says, "An Ojai Arts Commissioner overseeing education for the commission"—that's Pamela Grau—was able to tour the old Carriage House and become very excited about the possibilities. Got to love that lead. "Later, it refurbished the Ojai City Campus Carriage House into a vibrant learning center." I love it when we have landmarks that are used for something that doesn't take away from its status, but moves us forward in enjoying them. "A group of five said historic barns—" Schumash knowledge? Question. Events? Weddings? Halloween haunted house? Use barn events for revenue generation. Now, I'm a finance guy. I like that one, too. "One member of the Arts Commission created a proposal"—again, that's Pamela Grau. And so I would really like to thank Kathy Nolan, Betsy Van Light, and Pamela Grau, and they all took tours and went in there with the questions I had and came out with all of these great ideas. And so congratulations to them for doing that. I will also congratulate you on an item that we'll get to tonight and tell you that fortunately, with the now having three resident commissioners as well as two non-resident commissioners, we did meet last Thursday. Suzie was—probably our four-hour meeting did that to her. Suzie was there as our liaison as we went through and we discussed the different things at that. In that meeting, it was suggested and approved that instead of talking it as a local downtown historic district, that we—I got to explain the fact that we have currently a state historic district, and now we're proposing a local downtown historic district and what the difference was. And so the motion was made, and it was agreed to, that we rename that as the Ojai Civic Center. Center Historic District. Again, Civic Center going back to what Libby's first intent was for the city. And that will make it a lot easier to explain to others. So, again, that we are looking forward to, well, I'll say, I'll leave you on the edge of your seats and I'll make that comment in just a few minutes. So, again, thank you. It was wonderful to see that this was supported not only with the Green Coalition that was led by a former planning commissioner who did a fabulous job as the chair of that, but also incorporated the Arts Commission that has made a contribution to it. And then again, we were able to open up the historic Carriage House barn and find out just what was in there. So thank you all very much.
Well, thank you Chair Akins. And it's exciting to see what's going to happen with the Carriage House. It's a really beautiful building. Thank you. All right, well, we will move on to public communication. And just a reminder, these are items not on the agenda and because they're not on the agenda, we cannot discuss them. We appreciate your viewpoint and participation and we can agendize for the future. And public comments are three minutes, so we'll take the first 10 public comments and the remainder will be after the first agenda item. At the end of the three minutes, there's a chime, so please respect all of our time and stop talking at that point. And no giving away time. And there's a request to say your name and address. That's optional, though. And just a reminder that this is the time that the council becomes informed on your opinions and kindly though refrain from side conversations and ambient noise because otherwise we just can't hear what's going on. We can't hear the speaker. And let's all remember that also we are all part of the same community. And this community includes all the people here, in the audience, on the dais, and behind the scenes. And while we may not agree with each other on everything, we all need to come from a place of mutual respect, consideration, and civility. So I appreciate your efforts in that area. And we'll begin first with Ron Salarsenow from the library and then Journey Wade Hack and Cyrus Mayer.
Alrighty. Thank you so much, members of council. My name is Ron Salarsenow. I am the regional librarian for the Ojai Valley. And I'm here tonight to give you an update on what we have going on at the Ojai Library. And I want to start by highlighting that this month, we have a special craft kit available for kids to help them to design and make their own zines. Children can create their own, their small sort of ephemeral booklets or magazines that they can then photocopy and distribute to family and friends. So we have kits that will have a bit of supplies to help them do that, a little bit of advice on maybe some topics they can get into. And all that will be available this month while supplies last. So come on by the library to check that out. Then later on November 20th, we're going to have another youth activity. This is going to be a Smash Book creating activity. It's basically an opportunity for participants to create their own personalized journal, which they can decorate by writing or drawing, painting, gluing, whatever they'd like onto it. This can include pictures, quotes that mean something special to them, tickets from old concerts or events, or other keepsakes that they might want to include. So this is an event for ages eight and up. So yeah, stop on by, that's November 20th again for that. Other youth activities that we have coming up, some of our regular recurring ones, we have our Perler Party crafter activity, which is happening on Sundays from noon to two. We also have our Story Times on Wednesday mornings at 10:30 a.m. And then we have Lego play available on Fridays from 1:30 to 4:00 p.m. So a lot going on for youth over at the Ojai Library. I also want to mention that next month, we are going to have a local author and Ventura County Prosecutor, Richard Simon, who's going to visit the Ojai Library. It's going to be 6:00 p.m. on Thursday, December 7th. He's going to talk about his book titled Bring Me to Life. It's a mystery thriller about a homicide prosecutor who's been assigned the case of his career where a local tennis pro has murdered his ex-girlfriend. And the case seems obvious until a high-priced defense attorney hires an expert with a record of creating reasonable doubt. So the author, Richard Simon, graduated from CSUN and Loyola Law School. He's been a Ventura County prosecutor since 1984. He's worked on cases that include the murder of Norma Rodriguez by Warren Mackey, the murders of Lisa Gondik and Rachel Zendejas, and the CB murder case. He has twice been named Prosecutor of the Year for the Ventura County DA's office. So that again, December 7th next month, a local author talk. This is all going on in addition to our normal activities, the Ukulele Club, the knitting and fiber arts clubs. And if you have any other questions about that, you can reach out to the library or visit our website. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ron. Wow, a lot going on, exciting, thank you. Next, we have Journey Wade Hack, then Cyrus Mayer, and then Carol Wade.
I have a resolution proposal that I wanted to talk about and I wanted to know if I can hand these out to you folks now or maybe leave that for later. Thank you so much. So, good evening. My name is Journey Wade Hack and I am an Ojai resident belonging to District One. My family has lived here for 25 years, since I was four years old. I have deep roots here and this place will always be home, no matter where I am in the world. I am proud of the fact that the city of Ojai proclaimed itself an international city of peace in 2015. That is consistent with the Ojai that I know and love. I am here today to urge the city of Ojai to make good on that proclamation of peace by passing as quickly as possible a resolution calling for an immediate de-escalation and ceasefire in Gaza. It is important because as Americans, we are in a unique position of influence and therefore responsibility for what the Israeli government is doing at this very moment. Rather than describe the situation over there in my own words, I want to share with you the words of Omer Bartov, a respected Israeli-American scholar of the Holocaust and IDF veteran, speaking to a news program just a few days ago about the situation in Gaza. Quote, "There is clearly disproportionate killing of civilians. That is, the numbers are now estimated to be over 10,000. And even if we don't believe the numbers given out by Hamas, they're still in the many thousands. There may even be more because many bodies are probably buried under the debris. And of those, at least 4,000 are children. And one has to remember that half of the population of Gaza is under 18 years old. So to me, there is an indication that there are war crimes happening in Gaza, potentially also crimes against humanity." Close quote. There's so much to say on this topic, so much history to look at, but my time is limited and even more so, the time of innocent civilians in Palestine is limited. I am ashamed to be late in coming to, coming here to ask for this ceasefire resolution. The reports coming out of this part of the world are horrific and crucially, they are continuing with our support as Americans. Besides the moral problems with bombing one of the most densely populated areas of the world, I don't think this makes Americans or Israelis any safer. When we kill innocent people like we are doing, we unavoidably create new enemies. Please listen to your hearts. I am not asking the Ojai City Council to solve the Israel-Palestine conflict. I am asking that we do our small part to stand clearly for peace and to stay the hand of a government that Martin Luther King called the greatest purveyor of violence in the world. Let me close by reminding everyone that the definition of a hypocrite is one who focuses on someone else's crimes while refusing to look seriously at their own. Thank you so much and peace be with you.
Thank you, Journey. And I appreciate your enthusiasm. If we could just hold any applause or any noise, that would be great. Next, we have Cyrus Mayer, then Carol Wade, and then Ray Powers.
Yes, it's honored to be here today to speak with you all. It's my first time here in city council. My name is Cyrus Mayer. I live here in Ojai and I've been coming here since I was a child. I'm also here today to ask for support from you as our city council and the ceasefire resolution in solidarity with peace between Israel and Palestine. We're asking for a special meeting to be called due to the urgency of this matter and at the very bare minimum for this to be added to an agenda. However, I want to highlight the urgency of this matter in the ways that we can act as a voice. Since October the 7th, over 11,000 Palestinian civilians and 1,200 Israelis have died. Over half of these Palestinian civilians have been children. Thousands more are starving beneath the rubble and dying in the hospitals due to the denial of aid, of water, of food, of electricity, of fuel, and medical resources into Gaza. This military assault in response to the attacks of October the 7th is said to be in an effort to eradicate Hamas and retrieve the precious lives of the Israeli hostages. However, several ceasefire hostage negotiations have been denied by the Israeli representatives. And it is clear that this terrifying assault on innocent Palestinians will no doubt bring more hostility and extremism between the two sides. I'm an Ashkenazi Jew. I want to be clear that supporting a ceasefire is not anti-Semitic. And that this resolution, when passed, will actually improve my feelings of safety here in this city and in this nation, knowing that we support and advocate for human rights of all people regardless of race, faith, or creed. As our representatives within this political body, this political world, I ask you please to hear this call for ceasefire. We are uniquely tied to this war. Our country sends billions of dollars of military aid to Israel, which is currently being used to kill thousands of Palestinian people and to remove millions from their homelands. Please represent us and join the thousands of elected officials, community leaders, cities, and individuals in support of this ceasefire in Gaza. Please join us. Thank you.
Thank you Cyrus.
Yes ma'am.
Is this a resolution or are you saying that other cities have adopted?
Absolutely. So this resolution that we've drafted for you has been put forth by the city of Richmond in California, as well as another city in Southern California most recently. I can't pronounce the name, but it's in Los Angeles, right outside of Los Angeles. Alameda County has put forth a resolution. The city of Providence has put forth a resolution. The city of Dearborn, as well as a few other cities in Michigan. And it's a growing popular movement to provide an advocacy campaign on our local, most local levels to pressure our states and eventually our federal government to support the ceasefire. Because currently, the United States is the only, one of the few nations to deny a ceasefire within the United Nations Resolution of a ceasefire. So we see it as an imperative, urgent matter for us on the local level to build that movement and campaign for our federal representatives to agree to the ceasefire internationally. Thank you.
Thank you Cyrus. Next, we have Carol Wade, then Ray Powers, then DeeDee Dorskind.
Hi, thank you. Thank you for your work and thank you all for being here. My name is Carol Wade. I'm a citizen of Ojai for almost 25 years. At the end of this month, I live in District One. As I stand before you, there are armed conflicts in several places in the world. Sadly, the end of armed conflict comes at the high cost of human and other suffering and is not permanent. There is no way to peace. Peace is the way. It's a question of time. Do we do it now or do we spill more blood and have more orphaned and dead children, create more bodies of all genders and all ages, more destruction, more starvation, more pain, mind, body, and spirit? We human beings are capable of horrific things. And too often, the spotlight shines on that aspect of us. We are also brilliant, bright beings of light with a core of good that is difficult to extinguish. Let's emphasize that. I feel blessed to be a member of the Ojai community. I am pleased that we have declared ourselves a city of peace. I urge our council members to support our draft of the ceasefire resolution. I ask our council members to support this draft resolution and to get it on the agenda as soon as possible, including through, if necessary, setting up an emergency special meeting to get the resolution to the resolution to the finish line as soon as possible and demonstrate that Ojai demands a ceasefire and opening of humanitarian aid to Gaza now. Thank you.
Thank you Carol. Next, we have Ray Powers, then DeeDee Dorskind, and then Brianna Skelly.
Good evening. I'm Ray Powers. I've also been living in Ojai for 25 years. Good to see all of you. I'm taken aback that Mark's not sitting right there. In a short time, I grew to respect and love him a lot. I'm not here to talk about the ceasefire resolution because honestly, I haven't seen it. So I'm here because several people in the community asked me to come and speak about peace. I am one of the core founders of the Ojai International City of Peace along with Kathy Nolan. She left. And Brian and Lisa Berman and a handful of others. So, we re-proclaimed 10 years ago, Ojai as an international city of peace. And someone just before this meeting said, so I'm paraphrasing, you know, what does that mean, being an international city of peace? Like, what does that mean philosophically or boots on the ground? And it's an inquiry I'm constantly in myself. There's a lot of symbolic gestures, a resolution, a flag, International Day of Peace. I guess what I'd like us all to do is just take a moment, brief moment of silence and quiet, not only to send love and compassion to anyone who is suffering and not at peace, either at the hands of another or their own inner conflict, which many of us have in one way or another. So if we could just take like 10 seconds, I'm willing to give up that time and feel our feet on the ground and take a breath and tune into our hearts and try to ground into this concept of oneness that is so much thrown about and banted about. You know, are we all connected? And if so, can we treat each other better than we treat ourselves? And can we exercise emotional intelligence, restraint? Give more than we take? You know, I Googled how many world war, how many wars were going on right now in the world. There's 32 wars going on in the world right now. More than half of them have 10,000 plus people who have been killed, either in a short amount of time or a long amount of time. Every now and then, there's a nodal point, like now in the Middle East, that brings all our attention focused in one place. And hopefully, that breakdown will lead to a breakthrough and more peace in the world, whatever that looks like. So
Thank you Ray.
Be open to what Ojai International City of Peace looks like in our daily lives.
Thank you. Next, we have DeeDee Dorskind, then Brianna Skelly, and then Sasha Colbert.
Hi, I'm DeeDee Dorskind, a resident of Ojai. First of all, I want to say ditto about Mark Scott. I find that to be a grave loss. I find that to be a grave loss to all of us and to all of you because the one person that was going to bring you peace and cohesiveness decided to leave because you are not cohesive. So my first question is, Mr. Whitman. A flyer was recently circulated in Ojai asking voters in your district not to sign the petition for recall. Even though you are a lawyer and ostensibly should be aware of such things, the mayor, the mailer failed to state who prepared and paid for this mailer in violation of the California Government Code, Section 85, 84, 504, and FPPC Regulatory, 185, 31.5, open parentheses, E's, close parentheses, open parentheses, 1, close parentheses. Is it another failure of yours to prompt and your cohorts to not follow the law? You've already been admonished by one Superior Court Judge for failure to tell the truth. Will you now be truthful and say who paid for and was involved in this mailing of your flyer? That's number one. Oh, I know, you're not going to give me an answer. You never do. Mayor Sticks, I would like to know if your youth council meetings are open to the public and to all students in the city? And if possible, is there a way for us to participate and meet and see your meetings? Thank you.
Thank you DeeDee. Uh, next we have Brianna Skelly, then Sasha Colbert, and then Chris Barton.
Good evening. My name's Brianna Skelly. I'm a resident of Ojai in District Four. I'm also here urging you all to, um, support our draft that we have shared with you for a ceasefire. You know, just building upon a few of the things that people have said this evening. I'm a concerned citizen. I think many concerned citizens right now in the US are taking this into account because our tax dollars are funding this, and so we are implicated. And I think the, you know, change that can happen at the personal level, at the community level, and at the local level is really, really powerful. And so I do think Ojai, as a city coming forward, supporting a resolution, really matters. And there are other cities and counties, um, and larger coalitions across the board that are coming forward with resolutions and support. Um, the UN General Assembly has adopted a resolution for immediate durable and sustained humanitarian truce between Israeli forces and Hamas militants in Gaza. As of today, I think over 400 Biden administration employees have signed an open letter demanding Biden pursue a ceasefire immediately. These things are catalysts for peace. I hear that there is conflict all over the world, but I also see people across generations right now in our country really coming together. And I think that coming together on this issue can catalyze peace elsewhere. Um, I think it's a really beautiful and powerful thing happening, and I urge us as a city to take a stand for peace and especially call for a ceasefire right now. It is a very urgent matter. Um, lives are being lost every second. As we have said, there are children right now that, um, are in hospitals that have no electricity or support. So I hope we can urgently address this. We do have copies of this resolution, and any way that we as citizens can provide more information or support, we are here. I am here, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you Brianna. Uh, next we have Sasha Colbert, then Chris Barton, and then Larry Steingold.
Good evening, council members. Uh, my name is Sasha Colbert, and I am also a resident of Ojai. And I am also here tonight urging that you, the Ojai City Council, pass a resolution calling for an immediate de-escalation and ceasefire in occupied Palestine. Since October 7th, over 10,000 Palestinians and 1,200 Israelis have been killed. In addition, it is estimated that over 25,000 Palestinians have been seriously injured and are unable to receive adequate care due to the continued bombardment. If a ceasefire is not passed soon, many more will die. I'm here as a citizen who does not support the use of billions of American tax dollars that are funding this violence. This is money that should be spent instead on food, education, housing, and healthcare. I'm also here for my friend Mohammed Abijahab, who in one night lost 45 members of his family due to airstrikes. America is complicit in the erasure of entire Palestinian families. This is nothing short of ethnic cleansing of the Palestinian people. The media has portrayed the ceasefire as controversial and complex. It is neither. Polling has shown that the majority of American voters support a ceasefire, and it is simply the right thing to do. I invite you to represent your constituents, to help restore faith in our leadership, and to stand on the right side of history. Due to the urgency of this matter, I urge you to pass this resolution in support of a ceasefire as soon as possible. With deep thanks for your time and consideration. Thank you.
Thank you Sasha. Uh, next we have Chris Barton, and then Larry Steingold.
Thanks for, uh, hearing from us tonight. Uh, my name is Chris Barton. I grew up here. I live in Upper Ojai. Um, but I went to Summit School, then Matilah, Nordoff. Um, I've built homes in town, done remodels, and I work at a bike shop now here. Uh, my whole life is here. My family is here. I'm proud of my town, proud of being a town of peace. I am also here, um, hoping that you'll consider our resolution. And, you know, not to be repetitive, I'm, I'm just gonna leave some of the things out that I had prepared. I'm, I'm here because I'm tired of being complicit in the murder of thousands of Palestinians. And yeah, I, I understand that there's a lot of horrible things happening all over the world, but this feels like the most, uh, direct line. I shouldn't be able to draw a line between my tax dollars and the, uh, the name of a child on a list of Palestinians murdered by so-called Israeli Defense Forces in the past month, which last time I checked, uh, that list is, is over 10,000. Um, I'm tired of being told that considering the term genocidal is hyperbolic when describing the methods behind Israel's siege on Gaza. And I'm tired of watching our leaders amplify lies of warmongers and silencing voices of those trying to speak truth. I know it's a long way to the top. This is my attempt at thinking global and acting locally. This is a moment which, which you, our, our local leaders, have the power to take a stand for morality, liberation, and peace. The United States, more than any country in the world, has the power to end this violence and hold themselves in the state of Israel accountable. And as the people of Ojai continue to rise to action, um, as you see tonight, I hope that you'll join us in demanding an immediate de-escalation and ceasefire. Thank you.
Thank you Chris. Uh, next we have Larry Steingold.
Larry Steingold, resident. I wasn't gonna come here to talk about this because I didn't know it was gonna come. I thought, heard about it, but I wasn't sure. I was gonna ask about the why, and all the traffic and other things. But at this point, Hamas is a terrorist organization stated by the United States government and the European government. They had a ceasefire. They intentionally broke the ceasefire and butchered 1,400 civilians at concerts and babies and kidnapping. You want to have a ceasefire? Hey, no problem. They had one before, so they broke it. When, did we ask for a ceasefire that the Japanese bombed us? Did, how about the ceasefire with Al Qaeda? Oh, no. Okay. So do you expect the Israelis to put up with 1,400 butchered? Really? To go, oh, we're not gonna worry about it. Let, let's, we'll wait. So enough is enough. Okay? These people have failed to miss opportunities with agreements with Abbas, Abbas, PLO, what have you. The point is, this was an intentional, insightful, murderous, and butcherous act. Now they want a ceasefire? These people want a ceasefire? I want a ceasefire. Bring the hostages back. The Israelis have had a pause. They're doing everything. Israelis, they're not looking to kill people. They're looking to kill the enemy, and the enemy is a terrorist, which we all agree are terrorists. Terrorists deserve to go. Okay? That's what it's all about. They incited the country, they incited the world, and now we've got a really big problem. And when you have free Palestine, I don't know what that means, what free Palestine means. Because right now, Israel is there. You have the West Bank and you have Gaza. You can have history lessons, and we can show you coins from 1,400 BCE. Doesn't matter. We have to navigate from here. Okay? And if you want to have peace, fine, bring the hostages home. And for, uh, Ray Powers, I've asked him what the peace organization does. I, inner peace, what have you. But if they want peace here, how about the 700,000 that are dead in Russia and Ukraine? You don't hear anybody going, "Let's have a peace." Okay? How about Somalia? What are they, a million people in camps there? Five million people? How about the five and a half million Syrians that weren't tanked in by any of the Arab countries? So if you're gonna be consistent, okay, and you want to have a proclamation, follow it to the end. Have a proclamation for peace in general. You want to make it specific for Israel and the, and the terrorists? Fine. Release the hostages alive prior, to a neutral organization. Hey, how about you, and if you want to see some real fun films, watch them training kids to kill. So, have it with the hostages freed alive first. Then you want to have fun? Fine. Then have ceasefire. But don't ignore the hostages because that's what the UN did.
Thank you Larry. All right, we will take the remainder of public comments after Agenda Item 2. So let's move on to the consent calendar. Is there a motion to approve? I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye? Okay, wonderful. All right, we'll move on to discussion. This is Agenda Item Number 2. Introduction of an Ordinance Amending Title VI Businesses, Professions, and Trades of the Ojai Municipal Code to Add a New Chapter VIII Titled Proposed Rental Housing Development Rent Disclosure Ordinance. Uh, do we have a staff report?
Yes, Madam Mayor, briefly.
Give me a second to get my packet to that moment. So per the council's direction, some months ago, we've prepared a draft, Rental Housing Development Rent Disclosure Ordinance. In a nutshell, the ordinance provides that in any written communication by a buyer on behalf of a developer as defined for a proposed rental housing project, the communications must include several required pieces of information in at least a 12-point font. The anticipated maximum rents for each of the de-restricted affordable units in the project stated in dollars per month for rent owed, calculated using the current state affordable housing income limits at the time of the communication. For households of one person, two people, and three people, I'm sorry, four people. Uh, second, a statement that those anticipated dollars per month rent amounts will change as the income limits change under state law, as this happens annually. The number and type of affordable de-restricted units proposed within the project, including zero for any unit type not included in the project. And the types are moderate income, low income, very low income, extremely low income, or acutely low income. The number of years of each de-restricted affordable unit's de-restriction, most commonly these days, those are 55 years under the state density bonus law, but there are other possible options. The number and proposed size in square feet of each proposed market rate that is unrestricted rent unit within the project, and a statement that the market rate unrestricted units would have no restrictions on rents unless otherwise provided by law, as is sometimes true. The ordinance is intended to pick up these elements of communication by developers and those acting on their behalf as their commercial speech in the course of them providing a business, or run, attempting to run a business, namely rental housing, and requiring the information to be provided as part of that business and the operation of that business. Um, I would note that the staff report includes a sample disclosure as Exhibit B, uh, sort of a sample of what would be provided for a, an example project to try to put that focus into clarity. And second, we received a public comment letter from, I don't have it printed here, uh, from the attorney for the Cabrillo Housing Development Corporation, Ms. Barbara McCree Ortiz. She had made two recommendations, and staff is concurs with those recommendations. One was to change the language regarding, I apologize, that's not on this one, that's on the other one. No, I'm, I'm sorry, that was on the other one, if I remember right. Did I, were there two letters? Am I mixing it up?
Did she, did she come on on this or?
She had specific changes on the other one. I apologize, I'm mixing up my, my items. That's the other one. Um, with that, we would be happy to answer any questions on this item. Thank you.
Thank you Matt. Any questions from council? Councilmember rule?
No, I just, um, I mean, I think it's, I think it's great to be, to be clear, but I'm, I'm trying to see where here. I just want to make sure that the kinds of information that are included, we, we, I think we talked about this, includes the idea that, you know, one income versus two incomes, you know, is very, very important that people understand, and I want to make sure that that's in here. And if so, could you kind of point it out? So we're, we're looking at, you know, we're looking at household size, but it, that doesn't specifically say number of, um, incomes per household, which is a different metric. Correct? So, you know, and it does, it looks here, so I see the second bullet point, maximum income for a two-person, very-low-income household. So when you say a two-person, very-low-income household, are we talking about two people, two people's income versus one people's income? Because I want to make, I think it's really important, um, in that this ordinance be very clear about that, because that would tell someone how best to apply. I think it's incredibly important that that differential be, um, very clear. Because numbers are numbers, um, but for me, it makes a huge difference if you're, if you have one income or two incomes, right? So I just want to make sure that when we're talking about, um, all of this information that the developer needs to provide, and we're talking about clear, you know, the point is, the goal is clarity for, um, the tenants or potential tenants. I also want them to understand that, you know, it's not, two incomes is just a, a, a bit more than one income. So if they even knew to get a roommate, you know, that all of a sudden they might be able to apply, or, you know, that kind of thing. And that, to me, is the most critical element, is someone understands, given their income, how they could actually work it to apply.
We're on questions, so that's not straight into discussion?
Yeah, so, so I, I'm asking if that is in here somewhere.
I think that's inherent in the households of one person, two people, or four people component.
Okay, so it is income.
No objection to, um, adjusting the language. The key there is that the state standard, just look at the size of the household, although they don't look at the number of incomes. You could have a four-person household that gets the higher income, even if not all four people are four incomes.
Right, exactly. But it's really important, in my mind, that the tenants know that even if it's a four-person household, that, you know, that if you have...
Just, we're still on questions, so not discussion. We can talk about this after discussion.
I'm asking if it's here. I just, I just want to see if it's here because potentially I'm misunderstanding, and it's not clear to me. So, um, that would be my question to you, and we can certainly have discussion. But it might be here, and I'm not seeing it.
Yeah, I think it's inherent in the state's definition of households. It's just the, the raw count of the numbers of persons in the household. The, those persons in the household can be all income earners, or some income earners are, well, presumably at least... can be all income earners, or some income earners are presumably at least one income.
Okay, so in discussion, we can talk about what we think is really important for, to be in this ordinance, so that tenants understand the best way to make the thresholds, like how they can actually do it, right?
Yeah, I think that makes sense.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Any other, Councilmember Lang?
Yeah, I have a question. So, Matt, City Attorney, I believe the, the letter that you're referring to, that you were referencing before, is actually from the Executive Director of the Area Housing Authority of Ventura County. And in that, he talks about the, the number of bedrooms of an affordable de-restricted unit must be considered when determining maximum rent for that unit. Is that the change that staff is, would consider or would recommend?
I want to, the only thing I can recall is if he had, if he proposed specific revised language.
He did. He proposed a two-person, very-low-income household may occupy either a one-bedroom or a two-bedroom unit, would pay a different amount. I don't see any specific language, but he proposed an example of how that would work. I, I was, my question was, it's, was that the, the document that you were referencing before?
Yeah, that was the one I was thinking of, is I'm mixing up the Cabrillo and the Aha folks. And yeah, I think staff would be supportive of adjustments to reflect that reality.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor Protan, Francina?
Okay, yeah, I have several questions.
Microphone, please.
When you mentioned the area housing authorities, those are the people that distribute the, the vouchers. And those, and I have some experience with that, because I was thrilled after, I think I was on some four-year waiting list. When I lost, a few months before I lost my housing, I got a voucher, and those, and the, the figures of those vouchers do not apply to Ojai. Do you get my drift? Is that connected? Is that connected?
Yes, the, the question that I had, so the, the document that we received, this is in public, this is in the public documents, or public comments that we received, so anyone has access to this. The Executive Director applauded the ordinance and offered a suggestion for something else to consider. So, so I was referencing that and not the specific, I was referencing that and not the specifics of the process.
Okay, so he looked at this ordinance?
Yes, and he says specifically, "I applaud the council's desire to clearly define the maximum monthly affordable rent of a de-restricted unit as a means of addressing transparency to the public." And then he offers the caution that, that I, that I referenced in my question to Matt.
Okay, so my other, am I, okay. So I think Mark Scott asked about this. What is meant with any written communications about the project? What does that mean by any written communications? Didn't we got a letter, and he, and he mentioned that? What is meant by that?
So any written communications would mean any document, or whether paper, or email, or in any written, reduced to a fixed form, communication by a developer as defined to include the applicant of record, the property owner, if not the same as the applicant of record, and any person, and any acting on their behalf, sent by them to the public and/or the city regarding the project. So that, putting it in practical terms, that would include things such as the application that's filed with the city for the permits, any communications about the project, the letters back and forth that often follow an application by the applicant to the city. Would also include any public comment letters or emails submitted to the planning commission of the council, or any other commission, if the project had other commissions review. It would also include any other communications they may make to the community of the public, such as some applicants will pay for mailers or pay for ads in the newspaper, things like that. All of those would apply. Any kind of written communication. And the council could, of course, choose to narrow that definition if the council so chose, but that's what's presently drafted.
Okay, so we all got a, a public comment from Kimberly Rivers, a reporter. Yeah, we all, we all, all council members received those questions. Can we ask, you know, so she asked, were, with this proposed ordinance, would you say you are, you are, you who put this forth, and, and Matt Summers, who drafted the ordinance? So, so I think it's clear that the state definition of affordable is not really affordable. That's what we're saying, right? It's not really affordable. It's just-
I think it's-
Word question, questions for staff, you're asking?
Really affordable is a difficult question to answer, because that requires that I know your, your resources. I can't answer whether something is really affordable, because I don't know the person's resources.
Okay, okay.
But the ordinance is designed to attack the disconnect between the often commonly understood meaning of affordable and the legal meanings of affordable, which, as is evident, vary heavily, depending on the unit type, the size, the bedroom count, the person's income. The gap between the commonly understood meaning and the legal meaning.
The gap, that-
The gap between the commonly understood meaning of affordable-
Okay.
-and the legal meaning of affordable.
Thank you. That's all for now.
Okay, all right, we will move on to public comment. First, we have Nora Harold, then Bill Miley, then Anita Cram. And I'm just going to add, if we could just have silence, and if you could hold the side conversations until, or you could take them outside, and if we could just give the respect to the speakers, thank you.
Hi, Nora Harold. I've lived in the valley for over 14 years, outside of the city. I am here to ask you all to please pass this ordinance. I'm here completely in support of anything and everything that provides actual affordable housing for our citizens. I've been here before and spoken as an advocate for others, and I am losing my housing of 14 years due to my landlord needing to take his house back for personal reasons. So it is looking like we'll be leaving the valley, because there is nothing in the valley affordable for us, and we can take our work with us. So I thought I was being an advocate for others for the last few months, and now I'm advocating for myself as well. So please, take care of our most vulnerable in any and every way you can. You know, the economy is, is rough in Southern California, and as much as I work and as much as I do, I do not make enough money to afford this community throughout the entire valley. So, thanks.
Thank you, Nora. Next, and, and once again, I, I appreciate your enthusiasm, though, if, if you, members of the audience could remain silent, please, so we can hear up here. Thank you. Next, we have Bill Miley, and then Anita Cram.
Good evening. My name is, for the record, my name is Bill Miley. So here are my reasons why I believe this is unneeded. New Affordable Housing Income Guidelines are published every year by the state. All federal and state affordable housing laws and funding frame their support in rules for households not paying more than 30% of their annual household income for rent. The mayor states, "Often, those who are unaware of the complexity of affordable housing rules will express support for a proposed affordable housing." Expressing support for affordable housing in Ojai has not been a problem. The mayor is wrong here. She led the opposition to the Becker development so far successfully, although there was much understanding, misunderstanding about the differences in state guidelines and the years that we were using. The planning department and the planning commission provides clear information about deeded affordable housing income and rents. The mayor has stated, "Lower-income units that too often are not offered as part of projects, if offered, are too few in number." And that's true. Each project with deeded units are listed according to five incomes. The lower incomes require funding from state bonds and tax relief, and the deeded, and the Becker project didn't have any of that. Do we need this information in the ordinance? I don't believe so. Any developer will know exactly what the rents are to be charged, and the income levels needed, and the state, and present state and federal guidelines. 55 years is usually the only deeded category. The mayor says, "Should a proposed project include one or more market rate units, the number and size of the market rate units would be required to be disclosed, along with the following statement: These units would have no restrictions on rents." The statement is irrelevant. Market rate units within a development are not deeded, de-restricted, are priced at the current competition. Folks know that groceries are market rate when they go to a grocery store. To require developers to show the size probably indicates that the affordable ones are too small. In conclusion, much of this happens through our planning department, planning commission, and through developers. There's no need to have a detailed, somewhat oversight ordinance in our small city. Thanks.
Thank you, Bill. Next, we have Anita Cram.
Good evening, everyone. I urge City Council to vote yes on the proposal for a rent disclosure ordinance for developments within the city of Ojai. Our current housing crisis, with our current, in our current housing crisis, this makes perfect sense. Affordable housing is a very vague term, subject to a different definition by everyone. The city needs to ensure all community members are housed. The income levels of the unhoused and those at risk of eviction due to development or other reasons needs to be assessed and matched with the rental rates that are set in development projects for affordable housing. These development projects are required to replace low-income rental housing that is lost as the result of a development project. Rental disclosure would also be an important tool for the city to measure their own progress towards their compliance with their state-mandated housing element that prioritizes housing for low-income bracket community members. For this reason alone, you're housing a metal element and complying with it. For this reason alone, it would be a wise decision to implement the proposed ordinance that is being proposed tonight. You know, I've heard all kinds of reasons of why we shouldn't do this, of, but you know, I've heard every one of you City Council members express your deep concern for housing of our low-income community members. So now is a moment for you to step up and put your words into action. The suggestion that this goes against, I've heard free speech, but apparently that isn't coming up tonight, but that's really very deceptive, because, you know, this allows for not, right now, it ends up allowing for deceptive representation of the truthful affordable housing needs in our community. So, you know, I can't understand why you wouldn't do this. There's just so many reasons of, you know, housing element. You all feel this is so important. I've heard council members say, "Oh, we can't take this piecemeal approach, do this, then that, then that." You guys, it's the only way to get it done. If you had a big, full project, you'd never get through it. It would be stalled and hem-hawed. This is another piece of making our community a better community for everybody who lives here and makes it function. So please, vote yes.
Thank you, Anita. Any comments online, Weston?
Yes, yes, Mayor, we do have raised hands for item number two. First, we have Barbara McCree Ortiz, followed by Jerry Schwenke. Ms. McCree Ortiz, you have the floor.
Thank you. I think I'm unmuted?
Yes, you are. Please proceed.
Okay, thank you. Just listening to this discussion, just wanted to make a few points. One of the biggest problems we have in Ventura County is we have such a wide range of incomes, primarily in the East County. The ra, incomes are very high, and that's why we get stuck with this median income of, I think it's now, what, 123,000, which I think is absurd, which basically means that, you know, very low income is 50% of that figure. So the amount of money you need, or the, the definition of who is low income keeps getting stretched. With respect to this ordinance, I think it's a good idea to limit the, the communications to communications with the public, because what you're trying to do is educate the public, and there's a lot of communication that goes back and forth while you're doing your project, and I don't know that it, we need to have for every single one an explanation of all the rents. Household size is what is the focus, and the way you qualify in terms of a, whether you have a one or two-bedroom or a three-bedroom is based on your household size. And also, the income of the household, whether that is one income, two incomes, three incomes, it doesn't matter. It's just that the, the total of the incomes have to come within the threshold in order to be eligible. So you'll have different amounts of income that's available, or that's, that they can make, depending on the size of the unit, and also the rents are determined by the size of the unit. So I don't see that it's a difference between whether it's a one-income house or two-income house. I think the statement needs to be that it's all members of that household can make up to a certain amount in order to be eligible for that unit. And the unit, the rents are figured on the units, primarily based on 30% of that income level. But that's, tax credits, they, theirs don't actually fall exactly on the 30%, so it's, it's a little tricky. But I think you should focus on the communications that are being made with the public, because the public is the one that you're trying to serve here, and not every single piece of paper that goes in the development process, because I think that would be quite a bit unnecessary. Thank you.
Thank you, Barbara.
Next, we have Jerry Schwenke. Jerry, you have the floor.
Oh, good evening. My name is Jerry Schwenke. I live in Fourth District, and I absolutely support this, this proposal. And I got to thinking about that, that well, analogy of going to the, to the grocery market, and everything there is market value. Well, that may be true, but when I walk down the aisle, and there are like 20 different kinds of bread, they're all clearly priced. I don't have to wait till I get up to the checkout stand to find out what I'm going to be paying. I can make my choices, and, you know, and, you know, based on full disclosure of the price of groceries. Housing is just as important, and I think that full disclosure upfront of what it's going to cost to live in these places is absolutely important to potential renters, all of us. So I've got to say, thank you.
Thank you, Jerry.
No more raised hands for item two, Mayor.
Okay, all right, we will move on to discussion, and as I did bring this up in a meeting, and council decided to put it on the agenda, I would like to begin, and I appreciate all the public comments, and I believe that this is a time for the council to step up and take care of all the people in our community, especially the most vulnerable. And the reason, you know, it really comes down to vocabulary. Could I ask the audience to refrain from side comments, so that we can hear? The purpose of this ordinance is to give the public and decision-makers specific information about rental rates in all proposed new residential developments in Ojai, that if built, would have one or more de-restricted affordable housing units. It's intended to solve the issue with the word affordable, because, as we know, most of us think when we hear the word, in terms of a home, that means that the home is accessible to low-income households. This word, though, has been co-opted. It has a very specific legal definition in the context- It has a very specific legal definition in the context of deed-restricted, moderate, low, very low, extremely low, and acutely low-income households. And so this ordinance would inform the public and decision-makers of the maximum monthly rent amounts of these income levels. It's actually quite simple and is a very useful tool. I've been hearing about this topic from constituents since I ran for office in 2020 because people expressed a real desire to know how much monthly rents are in any proposal. And this ordinance really helps people come to a conclusion about whether or not they want to express support or dissent of a project by providing more information, the most important information in my mind. And it's a, it is such a useful tool, and it will be a positive contribution to public understanding of who will actually be able to live in a proposed development. And I think our community deserves to know that. And once again, we need to take care of people who really need help. So I also want to thank our attorney, Mr. Sommers, for writing a beautiful and very elegant ordinance and for doing the research. And it's really cutting-edge. And it's, as I said, it's a beautiful way to take care of our most vulnerable population. So I'd like to speak next. Mayor Protan?
So how does this work? I'm not a developer. I'm not a really, you know, I'm not, that's not my background. I'm knowledgeable and have expertise in other areas. But how does this, can a developer project what the rent will be? Like, in practical terms, how does this work? How does it work? How does this encourage low and, you know, truly low income? How does it work?
Well, it's transparency. So rather than just stating that this number of units, low income, this number of units, very low incomes, it's informing our community about the actual, how much that would cost for rent. Mr. Did he turn?
Yeah, I'm going to answer that a little further. Does not promote nor not promote any developer promoting any kind of unit count. In other words, it doesn't promote the developer builds more or less affordable or market rate units. What the ordinance is designed to do is to require that the developers' communications state plainly the expected dollars per month rent. They can't project it for the future, so it's designed to state it as of the date of the communication, what is the expected rent amounts in dollars per month based on the unit count that they're proposing. And I have some modifications based on the commentary. I'll get in that in a moment. But the idea being that when a developer comes in to propose an affordable housing project, given the realities of density bonus law, the housing overlay zones, and other applicable laws, they always have two numbers certain, their unit count and the type, the total unit count. So say 100 units total, and the number and type of deed restriction units. So they'll always come in with 100 units and half very low income, or 100 units and five very low income, or whatever the math is. They might change it later, but they always propose upfront a unit count. With, if I know they have five very low-income units, I can calculate with a little more information the anticipated maximum monthly rent for those units today because it's a math problem based on that they're very low income. Or if it's moderate income, say, you can calculate it from there. That's what this is designed to do, is to take the information from the developer, which is how many very low-income units, how many moderate-income units, et cetera, and convert it to dollars-per-month math. With the caveat is noted that it will change because the unit, the rent amount owed, the maximum rent amount owed for a very low-income unit today is not going to be the same as the maximum rent amount for a very low-income unit in three years when the unit, when the building is built. Assuming, you know, you figure a year for entitlements and then two years to build. So it's not going to be a certain, it's not going to be certain information that the tenant, the future tenants can look at this and say, "Oh, I know I can afford that. I'll be, I'll be able to go into that unit." It won't be that guarantee because it'll go up as incomes presumably go up. So that, there is that reality. But the intention is to at least provide some information in a more easily-understood fashion than in dollars per month rather than the current five very low-income units. You can run the math yourself. It forces developers to run the math.
Okay. But can, okay, say that we don't like the numbers. Can we then deny the project, negotiate? What happens then?
We can always negotiate, always. Depending on the project's details, we, and how many affordable units, and what type, and some other factors, it would probably be difficult to deny the project if it had a certain, sufficient affordable units and goes into the whole panoply of housing laws. Generally, though, it's a negotiation tactic and it's an understanding tactic. But we aren't necessarily, if we don't think that, say they propose, you know, five very low-income, and we want more, depending on the facts of the project, we may not be able to force more, but we can always ask for more.
So may I ask one more? Okay, when, can I mention the Cabrillo project when it came?
Let's use hypothetical examples because that's on tomorrow's planning commission agenda.
Okay, but...
And might, and will be coming to the Council.
But what my question is, when that project came before the planning commission, didn't they give figures?
As I recall, they did. They provided the information, and I think that's in the packet for tomorrow.
Okay. So is that information sufficient, what's in the packet tomorrow? Or is this proposing something different?
This is proposing more information than they've provided for that project. But again, that's a separate project that we're not deciding tonight. That's on tomorrow's agenda.
But, okay, so just to be clear, this is asking for more information than what's provided in the planning commission packet?
And more precisely, it's asking for more specific information. The planning commission packet includes the information to run the math because it states the number of units and the type of units. This asks that the developers then take that and convert out the income limits based on the three household, the samples, one person, two people, and four people. And I would propose we adjust that to account for bedroom size and then convert that into straight dollars per month. That level of, that next step of information is not in, as I recall, not in tomorrow's packet. And it would be beyond what developers have provided in the past. Focusing on other developers. Again, we're not debating that particular project.
I mean, it sounds really good, but we don't know if the figures that they're giving is actually what that's going to be, is what you said, right?
We know that their anticipated figures based on what the rent would be required if the unit existed today, that will not be what rent is, what the rents are charged when the unit is built. That's true. It's an anticipate, that's why it's an anticipated maximum rent. The other point that's worth noting is that all of these rent amounts are maximums. The actual rent paid by a person who qualifies may be lower because the requirement is that you make no more than the stated income amounts to be eligible to join, to then participate. And usually, it's a lottery. Sometimes it's a first-come, first-served. There's always an application process. If you make less, so let's say for a very low-income unit right now, for one person, a household of one person, that's $46,500. You have to make $46,500 or less to be eligible to apply for that unit. But there's no, there's no, you don't have to pay the maximum rent. It's that exact rent. You can pay less if you make less. It's a function of your maximum income, not your, it's not minimum.
Susan, maybe, maybe, let's just, maybe, let's go through the chair.
You know, I know these questions have been asked before. And I know that if you're living in certain types of housing, they always want to know your income and your tax, they want to see your tax return. Now, it could be someone like me, I could struggle for years and years writing a book for which I get no, you know, maybe years before I get an advance.
Sure.
And so then what happens if I suddenly get a really nice, how does, you know, like, what I'm worried about is all this micromanaging. I really, that concerns me.
Understood. So let me answer that quickly and then I'll... The information, if you have a low-income restricted unit and your income suddenly shoots up, in most cases, and I use the word "most" because that's a very specific question. We don't have the documents in front of us because it's hypothetical. In most cases, you can stay in the unit for at least a year, but you may not be able to stay in it past the year unless you can prove your income's going to go back down. Most of the affordability covenants have an annual check on your income. So if your income spikes up for a year, you may not be able to stay. But it's going to depend on the details of that unit type, which generally depends on why it's an affordable unit. And that breaks into two big categories.
Okay.
Deed-restricted affordable units due to density bonus, and deed-restricted affordable units due to tax credit financing. Sometimes it was the same, sometimes they're not. And that, the affordability covenants will dictate the rules based on what happens if your income spikes. But you're not kicked out that day. You may not last the next year, though.
And then you'll be stuck again.
All right.
And then you'll hopefully be able to afford something.
Councilmember Rule?
It may become clearer as the discussion goes on, Susan. There's a lot, a lot, a lot of details.
Yeah.
So the way I perceive this is basically a consumer information document. And for me, the information that consumers need is the, they need to know information about, as you said, the bedrooms and what kind, and what number of people you can have in the units based on the bedrooms. And as I recall, it's two people per bedroom, and then you can have one person on the couch.
Yeah.
Okay? So they need to know that. They need to know how, they need to understand that when they look at these numbers, they are talking about household incomes. So when you have this number of people, right, that's the number of people in the household. But it's not the number of people that are contributing to the total income. And that's what they need to know. They need to know that it's total income, right? So they can start to work with that. So that, to me, is a very important piece. And the reason it is a very important piece is that we have, while this may be low-income housing, for us, our teachers would qualify. You know what I mean? And so I think that, you know, we need to understand that this isn't just low-income housing. It, you know, because our population makes such, you know, doesn't make nearly the median income. But for instance, two teachers, you know, perhaps. So I want people to be able to look at this and say, "Oh, I do have a job." You know, even if you have two minimum-wage jobs at $15.50 an hour, which is the California minimum wage, if you had full-time, that would be $33,000 each, which would mean if you had two people, that would be $66,000. And I want people to be able to do that kind of, I want a matrix where they can actually do that. So what we have now is we have all of the numbers. And what we're asking for is, okay, developer, actually do the math for us and put it there. Now, I don't want to get into whether or not this is a tension between our low-low renters and, you know, they feeling that low income is, you know, not, it doesn't speak to them. What I just want is, I just want the information for everyone in our community to understand that they may be low-income, even though they are fully employed in a professional job. I've talked to people and I've shown them examples of low-income housing, like the Cabrillo, but the one they built in Fillmore. And I've asked them, "Would you live in this?" And these are people that are, you know, semi-professional. The choice of living with their parents and living in one of these is hands-down, they will take these, right? So what I don't want this to become is, you know, gosh, the state is all wrong. We really aren't low-income, you know? They're trying to pull the wool over our eyes. I want this to become something that our community can look at and figure out what they qualify for regardless of whether they consider themselves low-income or very low-income. It's a standard formula, you know, Susan. It's based on the average median income and then a percentage of that, right? So you have your average median income, 140, let's just say 150,000, okay? And moderate is 50% of that, let's just say. Okay, I'm trying to go to round numbers so we can do the math really easily, you know? I want to, so if you have 150,000 and you have moderate income is 50% of that, you know that together, your household income has to be no more than $75,000, right? And I, so that's what I want people to know. I don't want us to go out there and say, you know, "Gosh gee, we're really not, you know, we don't make the..." You know, it's a lie, right? They're fooling us. It's a semantic question. No, let's make it real and true for our community to figure out if they can move in to these low-income and low-low-income and moderate-income houses that we are required to build, right? So that's my goal as far as public information and clarity to the public. It's not about saying the state is, you know, exaggerating what everybody makes. That's pointless and doesn't do any good for anybody. What we want to do is put people in houses that they can afford. So I think that for that reason, we need to have those three pieces of information. We need to have household size. We need to have the area median income and how that breaks down percentage-wise, all the way down to low income. And then we need to be very clear that we're talking about household income versus number of people living in the household. So people can figure it out, you know? And then they can make an informed choice about whether or not they want to build housing for themselves and for their colleagues and for the people that need it. So that's my statement. And I think I've said everything I really have to say. So definitely tell me not to say more and waste your time, okay?
Councilmember Lang?
Yeah, so I think just, I think that one of the things I, I'm leaning toward supporting this ordinance for a couple of different reasons. One, I was just, I'm really proud of this, but I was just really, I was just appointed to the Community Services Policy Committee within the California League of Cities through one of the caucuses that I'm a part of. And I've been ramping up, learning about what other cities are doing for housing policy that protect renters and that also accommodate, that provide real, truly affordable housing for the residents. And there are so many cities right now that are doing really innovative ordinances. There, to my knowledge, I don't know of any other policy like this in the state. And so, kind of like we did with the bodily rights of elephants, I think we could really be leaders in this. I know some of you are laughing about that, but I really, I thought that was something I was really proud of.
That's international.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I know. Exactly, exactly. We have an opportunity here to do something really innovative. And I think to, you know, to Councilmember Rule's point, what, I think one of the challenges with the general, with anyone who is looking for housing or anyone who is confused about what they would qualify or what the rents are in the communities, this would outline, here is, here is a housing development. Here are the ranges of rents for this housing development. So we're not telling any developer what they can and can't build. We are not doing anything to prevent affordable housing or to delay it or to slow it. What we're doing is we're saying to, to the residents, to our community, here is the project that's being proposed. Here are the prices of the rents. And someone who is a teacher or who is, falls within that low-income range, who might not consider themselves to be low-income because they have a good job as a teacher or a nurse or a firefighter, they might not think I'm low-income. They might think that's somebody else. But low-income, as we know from the charts that we have seen in the public comments that were sent in and just from knowing housing law and housing, housing policy in the state, low-income, people who could be considered low-income have good jobs. So this would give them an ability to see themselves in a deed-restricted property that they might not otherwise see themselves in. So it gives them more options. I really appreciate what Ms. Ortiz said. She's an expert in this, and I trust her. And hearing her tonight really helped me lean more and solidify my decision about supporting this. And I do... And I do, I do like the recommendations that she proposed about specifically addressing this toward, toward public communications. But the fact that, you know, that properties that she would be involved in would be properties that would, that this ordinance would apply to. And we have some projects like this coming up, and I think it would help anyone who is either in, who is thinking about whether or not they support a project and want to come and speak in public comments. This ordinance would give them all the details they need to know, so they don't have to go up and look and do math. Who has time to do math, except for us, you know? I mean, we do math, that's our job to do math. But this would give them a real clear way of seeing whether or not they're in support of something, whether or not something is affordable or whether we could do better. So, I think it gives us an opportunity to hear more from, from the residents, from the people who matter the most. I also am just going to go back and, and ask staff to reconsider that email that we received from the executive director of the area housing authority. In it, he proposed, or he referenced, he talked about some of the challenges with the, with this ordinance as it is. And, and so, I would ask staff to go, to add, to consider some language in reference to what, to what he proposed, specifically looking at the number of bedrooms and, so in-communication price, number of bedrooms, so that, so that people, so if we are, if we are promoting transparency and we are coming up with our own solutions to the real problems we have with affordable housing, that we're considering everything, all aspects of it.
Counsel member Whitman?
Yeah. So, what I'm, the way I'm seeing this is that we're talking about two topics. This ordinance is designed primarily to address one. So, that one topic is that when the term "affordable" is used, it doesn't tell you whether you can actually afford it. And this ordinance does a good job of explaining what it's going to cost to rent a room or to rent a unit, you know, with a bunch of details filled in with that. The part that we're not really addressing here is saying, "Who can afford it?" That's not in this ordinance, and I don't think it needs to be in this ordinance. I see potentially two ways of addressing that issue, though. One is either refer the potential consumer. Matt said earlier, if he knows, you know, certain facts, he can do the calculations pretty quickly to figure out. And so, we can potentially refer to consumers to those regulations which tell you who is going to qualify for that income, that affordability level. Or, if that would be too convoluted for a consumer, you know, could we make our own kind of a grid or table that was an appendix that would allow someone to do that? Now, I'm, I'm not wedded to the idea that we should do that in this ordinance. I do think it's something that we do need to provide the public with the information that, that they need to know, can I qualify for these units? I would like to see this include a statement whether the proposed project removes any of the protected affordable units that are described in that Government Code 66300.
The Housing Crisis Act of 2019.
And if affordable units are being removed, are the affordable units being replaced and I don't, if, if that slows the process down, I don't need it to go in now, but I think eventually it should, we should have that. And then the final thing I'd say is that I think we can address the concern that attorney Ortiz had in that if, if a developer makes that initial statement to the city and, you know, the community, so we've described it as writings, you know, to the public or to the city, if they make that initial disclosure, then it doesn't make sense for them to continue to have to do that unless things have changed. So, that developer should have the ability to say, "Nothing has changed from our initial disclosure," or, "It has changed, and here's how." And that way, they can greatly streamline, you know, they don't have to, like, put together a book each time they do it. And those are all my comments.
All right. Well, I really appreciate council members' comments, very thoughtful. Is there, and also on a personal note, having been a teacher most of my life, I thought I was doing okay, and I didn't realize I was low-income. And I was doing okay. So, I think, you know, that's an example, and I appreciate council members bringing up teachers because we really, you know, that's the biggest employer in our valley, that, and tourism. So, we really do need to support all of our teachers. We have so many schools, and so, I really appreciate that focus. Is there, is there a motion that someone's ready to put on the table?
I'll make a motion.
And before a motion, I'm happy to sort of summarize adjustments that staff sees that might be baked into a motion. So, council might consider a motion, introduce the ordinance as proposed with some adjustments that would include in the primary section, Section 6803, to provide, as in all-go-in order in the text, in every written communication to the public and once to the city unless the project description has changed, making that point in, that the disclosure include seven things. The first being, the anticipated maximum rents for each deed-restricted affordable unit stated in dollars owed for rent, rent each month calculated using the current affordable housing state income limits as published by the State Department of Housing and Community Development effective at the time of the communication for the applicable type of deed-restricted affordable unit, including the applicable numbers of bedrooms proposed for each unit type, each unit type's maximum occupancy in numbers of persons. And with the state, with the statement that the applicable maximum income amounts are maximum household income amounts for households of one person, two people, and four people to include the applicable income limits for each unit type. And we'll massage where they put the commas and so forth, but to include each of those points. And then, in the second bullet, to a statement that the anticipated maximum income, I'm sorry, anticipated maximum deed-restricted affordable unit rents stated in dollars per month will change as income limits change under state law and may vary by each unit's bedroom count and other factors as required by applicable law. Designed to account the AHA, our representative from AHA's point about bedroom size, but also, there may be something we haven't anticipated that's baked into some financing component. Third, the number and type, moderate, low, very low, extremely low, acutely low of each deed-restricted unit, four, the number of years of restriction, five, the number of proposed size in square feet, and bedroom count, bed, room count of each proposed market rate unrestricted unit, six, the statement that the market rate unrestricted units would have no restrictions on rents, and seven, the new one, the point that whether the project proposes the removal of any units protected by the Housing Crisis Act of 2019, and if so, how, whether they're being replaced. And with that, staff would recommend the ordinance as adjusted. Thank you.
You ready for that motion?
I'll make a, I will make.
Okay. Let's get the motion, and then we can have more comments.
I just have a quick question, but that's fine. Go ahead, make the motion, and I'll ask a question.
I'll make a motion to direct staff to return with a revised ordinance for our review considering the changes proposed by the city attorney.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, thank you. Question?
Yeah, I did. So, I know that you said the anticipated maximum, and so, I know that you could assume that the maximum for the type of housing below it would be the floor. I'm just saying, do you want to put a floor and a ceiling in there rather than having people assume? So, you know, it's within a range, right? So, maximum is maximum, but range is range, so ceiling and floor. And I don't know, I'm just saying, sometimes it's easier when you're trying to figure something out if you can look between the range rather than looking, you know, having something separated where you're, am I making sense, where your floor is actually the ceiling of the category below it? So, you could have floor and ceiling. Never, you know, I'm just saying that when you're looking at something, it's easier to see when it's a range than to try, just visually. You do what you want.
Yeah, I get that point, that it's, we sort of can put ourselves in a range easier than you can assess whether you're above or below a single point. My only, my hesitation is, is I recall the affordability covenants typically don't specify a minimum income, but that may vary by project type. So, I would suggest that council authorize us to communicate with AHA and Cabrillo and other people who live in this space as to whether there is a minimum component, and if so, can make that point in.
Right. Yeah, so, from what I understand, at least in some projects, you do have to fall within the range. You can't, like, downgrade yourself or, you know, you're within this range, and that's where you fall, and you don't get to downgrade yourself.
Got you.
Or upgrade yourself, you know?
And part of that reflects the fact that they do.
Yeah. So, I don't know, I'm just, I want this to be as clear as possible for the public so that they can figure out where they stand in all of this. So, that was just a point to make, and, you know, take a look at the matrix, and maybe it works that way, maybe it doesn't.
Okay. All right. Well, we have a motion. In a second, could we have a roll call, please, Weston?
Was that last authorization for staff to communicate included in the motion?
I'll include that in my motion, yes, please.
And I think that my, one might be covered as well by including a low-end range as applicable, because that, again, would vary by unit type. And then the only question staff would have is, is the intention to introduce the ordinance with these oral amendments or to return with a revised text to be introduced next time? We would ask for clarity on that.
I would introduce the ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you.
Weston, roll call, please.
Roll call. Counsel member Whitman?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Francina?
Yes.
Counsel member Lang?
Yes.
Mayor Stix?
Yes.
Counsel member Rule?
Is it too late to ask a question?
I...
I think after the motion is, for visually, okay, okay. I just want to make sure that we're holding on to the fact that we still have the second reading, and we won't rush through it and all that kind of stuff. It's done.
Yeah, second reading is still a thing. We can make minor changes to the second reading without having to introduce again.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, then, yes.
Motion passes.
All right. Motion passes five zero. Thank you. And let's take a brief intermission, and we'll be back with the rest of the public comment. All right, if you could please, we are back. If you could take your seats, please, and come to quiet. If you could come to quiet, please, and we are back. We are going to continue with the remainder of the public comment. So, first, we have Aviva Bernat, then Vaughn Montgomery, and then Helena Pasquarella. Is Aviva here?
Yeah.
Okay, Vaughn Montgomery?
Sorry, didn't have a good place for my coffee. All right, thank you for giving us a chance to speak with you, and thank you to the various folks who already spoke about this issue. Peace be with you. Shalom and Salaam alaikum. A quote from Thich Nhat Hanh. If we want peace, we have to be peace. Peace is a practice, not a hope. Once again, we hear the horrible drums of war. We hear the usual talking heads in the media conditioning people to hurry to one side or the other. Once again, we hear them tell us that those people on the other side are ignorant, or evil, or both. Some will even suggest that the other side shouldn't even be allowed to speak or protest, that their thoughts or words are a crime, that they are not human. Within the noise of this hateful divisive rhetoric, of gory videos, added sound effects, sweeping judgments, and threats of revenge which come from both sides, we also have a gentle and holy flame of hope. A growing number of Arabs and Jews, Muslims, Palestinians and Israelis, including those whose families were murdered or taken hostage, are calling for a ceasefire. Behind these brave peacemakers, many of whom risk their livelihoods, their physical safety, arrest, or even death, is an international chorus of human rights groups, academics, doctors, activists, and citizens joining in solidarity around a ceasefire. Just a few of the reasons why so many of us are calling for a ceasefire. Because a ceasefire stops the inhumane murder of innocent civilians on both sides of this conflict between Israel and Palestine. Estimates are at least 1,200 Israelis and 11,000 Palestinians have been killed so far. The majority of deaths in Gaza include women and children. Defense of Israel does not include mass murder of women and children, just as Palestinian liberation cannot include mass murder of women and children. People in both nations have been fixed in a continued state of trauma and fear for over five weeks now. A ceasefire offers them a chance to catch their breath, process the grief, make timely critical decisions about how they will respond to the nightmare of the last month and how they will navigate the unknown future. A ceasefire will stop immediately the humanitarian crisis that is now raging in Gaza and allow for the essential delivery of medical supplies, food, water, fuel, that is waiting at the border. A ceasefire will also allow for the urgently needed diplomatic dialogue which has been put on the back burner that can focus on both the return of Israeli hostages and the return of some of the roughly 2,000 Palestinian prisoners, many of whom are Israeli citizens who have been arbitrarily detained under a loophole in Israeli law without charge or trial. A ceasefire will allow for the international investigation of any and all war crimes committed by either or both parties. A ceasefire will allow for the long overdue, deeper work of representatives from Israel, Palestine, and the international community to more thoughtfully consider the best way forward for the people of the region, whether as two sovereign states or as a United States under a new and unified title that might resonate with both parties.
Thank you, Vaughn.
Finally, a ceasefire limits the likelihood...
It's time, can you, thank you, thank you, Vaughn, time's up. Appreciate your comments. Next, we have Helena Pasquarella, then Jody Lewis, and then Sue Williamson.
Good evening, City Council and Mayor. I just want to thank you for your time and for being here and listening to us. I gave you all a heart, and it reminds me to speak from the heart, and I appreciate you listening from the heart, and it also, I hope, represents that you will make your decisions from the heart. And I wanted to say, I'd like to acknowledge that this meeting is being held on the traditional lands of the Tumash people, and I pay my respects to the elders of both the past and the present. My name is Elena Pasquarella, and I am a member of the U.S. Department of Peace, and we're the group that holds the peace vigils every Friday at the Libby Park Arcade, and we've been doing it from, for over 20 years now, every Friday. We've been there, and because the wars keep coming and keep lasting. And someone mentioned that, well, why didn't we do this for the war in the Ukraine and Russia, or the Syria? And I believe that there's a movement now, and we're just tired of the United States government declaring war on the world and supporting wars like the one that's going on in Gaza and in Israel. When we were at the meeting last, last Friday, the peace vigil, there was about 12 people, and there was a sign that said, "Stop the genocide." And I truly believe that what is going on now is a genocide of the Palestinian people. As people have mentioned, 1,200 Israelis were murdered and 200 people were taken captive, and that was wrong. But that does not warrant the continued bombing and killing of Palestinians of more than 11,000 people, as we know, children and women and UN workers and doctors, and... So, I'm here to ask you to read the ceasefire and to make this decision with your hearts and know that your constituents here in Ojai, we're a city of peace, as Ray Powers mentioned, and we are all connected to each other, but to the Palestinians as well, and to the Israelis as well, who have lost their life in this war. So, I ask that you pass the resolution or listen to it and make a decision, meet about it. And one of the things that, because we are a city of peace, there were a few things that are mentioned about being a city of peace, and I wanted to mention, promote and respect all human rights, advance understanding and tolerance and solidarity, promote international peace and security. And that's what we can do as a city of peace by passing this resolution. Thank you.
Thanks, Helena, and thank you for the hearts. Jody Lewis, and then Sue Williamson, and then Nora Harold.
Hi, thank you for taking all of our comments and listening with your heart, right? So, today, I'm up here as another voice asking for a special meeting to adopt the proposed resolution for a ceasefire. And I'm here to say, we cannot wait another two weeks, take any two-week slot of what is going on. We cannot wait, the thousands more will be dead, thousands more children will be killed. Those on both sides will, to wait for our next city council meeting. Especially for us, like, we're a city of peace, we're an international city of peace, and that means something. I'd like to read from a letter written by Jennifer Brady, the UN representative for the International Cities of Peace, to the UN Secretary General, written on the 23rd of October. And it describes the mission and the responsibility of cities of peace. The mission of international cities of peace is to help organize a tipping force for global peace. To that end, we are creating the infrastructure of peace, community by community, to localize, democratize, and sensitize, sensitize geopolitical decisions to the needs of families. And in Ojai, we're a community of families. I personally, Jody Lewis, I've lived here for 12 of the last 15 years. I've raised my children here. My house flies a flag that says, "Practice radical empathy." My husband, who was my husband for 24 years, Ashkenazi Jew. My three daughters, our three daughters we raised, they identify as Jewish. All of them are cheering me on for being here and are equally as horrified as I am by what's going, and so many people here are, by what's going on in the Middle East. My girls spent some years at Oak Grove, and they know their way around a peace table. And I think that's baked into the DNA of this city, and there's a responsibility to our kids who are watching to show up as an active, an active international city of peace. And a ceasefire is the only thing that gets all sides to the peace table. We need this now. We cannot wait. We need a special meeting to basically become an active city of peace and create together what is our responsibility and what we agreed to.
Thank you, Jody.
I just want to thank you, Jody, and all the rest who have spoken on this, and just say that when we come toward the end of our meeting and we talk about future agenda items, I will be, I've heard you all, and I've read all of the comments that have come in, and so I will be talking about this later when the time is appropriate.
Thank you.
Next, we have Sue Williamson, then Nora Harold, then Andy Gilman.
Good evening. I'm Sue Williamson, I live in Ojai. I'm here this evening to present to the council and the city manager our petition from the Teramina, the Esophical Community Incorporated, requesting to be put on your agenda to consider and hopefully ratify a change in the Teramina Historic District Ordinance. Rather than read the petition here, I'm going to just pass it out to you, but to quickly summarize. As I said before here in public comments, the current roof restrictions are constructively preventing building low-income housing on our numerous empty lots. And given the current and ongoing public housing crisis, we feel this is a great opportunity for the council to take positive action to address this crisis. Thanks for your consideration, and I hope to see this on the agenda soon. I'm going to pass it out. And since I didn't get to comment earlier, because I was, anyway, I'd just like to throw in real quick that I do support the idea of requiring rent disclosure on proposed rental housing developments, as well as local tenant preference policy for low income here.
Thank you, Sue. Next, we have Nora Harold, then Andy Gilman, and then John Drucker.
I am, so I'm so moved by all the comments tonight about the ceasefire. And I stand in support of peace and an end to war and violence everywhere. However, an ordinance like that passed by a city council who has members who are currently attacking other council members and attacking people of the public who come up to speak is performative. Peace, it starts here. It starts here. It starts here. What we see there, that murder and bloodshed and horror, is a manifestation of our inability to come together everywhere. Last night in the Senate, Bernie Sanders had to step in to prevent a fistfight between a representative of the Teamsters and a senator who was challenging the representative of the Teamsters to fight, right? This is everywhere, this conflict. So during the workshop this summer, the Priorities Workshop, there was, an idea floated. Tisha Morris spoke about it. You all talked about it. Rachel proposed it, that you all sit down and create together, that you collaborate and create a code of ethics and a way to interact and behave with one another. So you can model that peace for our community, because you are in a position of power. I know it probably doesn't feel that way, right? Because you're all under attack all the time, but you are. So when you all take actions, go on social media and trash another council member, yell at a community member in public, call me a name, reference someone who called me a name and say you agree with him, when you take those actions, you say, "Okay, it's okay to do this." And then we're not an international city of peace. We're not. That is also performative. It's performative until we actually create it. Thanks.
Thank you, Nora. Next, we have Andy Gilman, then John Drucker, then Rosemary.
Hello, council and staff and community. Different subject altogether. Just today, we published an interview that we had with Help of Ojai that we just created last week, and I sent that all to you today around 5:00. And I forgot to mention, I'm Andy Gilman with the Agora Foundation. I live on Golden West, and I've been in Ojai most of my life. This is really interesting, this Help of Ojai, in that it's people who are directly working with people who are dealing with this economy that we have and our housing crisis directly every single day. I found it incredibly illuminating, so you could find it on our website, but it'll be, I put it on Facebook today as well, but you all have it, and I hope you do look at it. It's just fantastic, I think. And for anybody who doesn't know, the Agora Foundation works with nonprofits and also some of the council members. I hope to interview all the council members, just so you can speak at length, and all the questions are agreed upon, you get the final choice of the edit, and that's what happened with Help of Ojai, so I encourage everybody to check it out. It's on agorafoundation.org. And we have started with OUSD. It turns out they need two sessions. That's coming soon. But our goal would be to share as much information as we can, so that we can all make these fantastic decisions, especially what's coming before you very soon, which is these projects. So to hear from as many voices as we can, I think, will be really useful. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, Andy. Next, we have John Drucker, then Rosemary, then Marissa Gonzalez.
Good evening. I'm John Drucker. I live in Andrew Whitman's district and practice law one block away from here. And I, too, am here to talk about peace, peace and reconciliation. And peace and reconciliation require an acknowledgement of past wrongs and atonement, starting with heartfelt apologies. Now, in light of the Ventura Superior Court's decision last month, I would ask at least three of you to issue such heartfelt apologies. Starting with you, Mr. Summers, I'd like you to apologize to the entire city of Ojai for misguiding everyone for months on end. You should also apologize for shouting down Leslie Rule, Robin Gerber, Wendy Lerner, and a number of others. Madam Mayor, I'd like you to apologize for repeatedly stating as fact that Leslie and I violated the Brown Act and for repeatedly and derisively referring to me as only a cannabis attorney. I've been a litigator for over 30 years, as you might have gathered from the judge's written decision. And Mr. Whitman, you can now apologize for repeatedly denigrating my legal skills, especially since I was 100% right and your legal expert was 100% wrong. You should also apologize for your libelous statement that Leslie Rule made the disclosure she did simply in order to curry favor with the Becker Group. Not to mention, apologize for lying under penalty of perjury about the DA's letter to this entire council regarding the Brown Act. Now, all of these apologies would be Ojai nice, and unlike empty lip service to notions of peace, would actually further the cause of peace, which we all value very deeply. Thank you. And now, I would certainly welcome the brief remarks in response that the Brown Act allows you to make.
Thank you, John. Next, we have Rosemary, and then Marissa Gonzalez.
This is public comment, and it's a generally one-way communication.
No, 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 it's not true.
Generally, yes.
No, that's not true.
Okay. Okay, Rosemary?
No, 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 excuse me. Point of order here.
Okay, excuse me. State your point.
My point of order is, is the Brown Act does allow conversation between council members. So if council member Susa Frincina would like to respond, it is within the Brown Act and it was within her rights to do so. It is not really within your rights to say no.
I'm just, as I said, generally, it's a one-way form of communication. You can ask clarifying questions. Do you want to ask any?
Microphone, please.
Do you want to make a comment?
Another, another point of order.
Excuse me, excuse me. One at a time. Can you please go through the chair? Mayor Protem, do you want to make a comment?
Well, I think...
Microphone, please.
I thought that Mr. Drucker, John Drucker's request was very reasonable and would do a lot to heal the divisiveness in the community. If we would just, I've asked for this before, let us acknowledge that mistakes were made. Or you might say that you don't think that you were wrong, but at least say something, because it's going to come up. And it would be, you know, why, why do you ignore something that keeps coming?
Mayor Protem, if you want to make a comment, that's fine. Are you finished?
My comment is, I also am asking that you acknowledge the mistakes that were made. Why not? Why not?
Okay, we're going to continue with public comment. We have Rosemary.
I only put my first name, but I'm Rosemary Hall, and I just wanted to thank you all. I don't know, public comment feels really just humanizing, that I can look at all of your faces and your eyes, and I keep calling every day Julia Brownlee and requesting a ceasefire and requesting a response. And I feel like my voice is not being heard. I'm not being responded to. And I go to sleep every night, and I wake up in the morning. I'm an educator, so I work with people of all ages and a lot of children, and I just can't imagine what it is like to be existing in Palestine, to wake up there, to be there in the past and now, and what the memory of this moment, what kind of impact it's going to have. And I think that this is a critical moment to step up and to do the right thing. And I think that this is, as a person in Palestine, being bombarded and not having water, food, or electricity, and existing in the rubble, and knowing day in and day out that there are people in the world not asking for a ceasefire is appalling, and I hope that as, you know, a small city, we still have a voice and can start momentum in the right direction. So thank you very much for hearing us, and I hope that we will speak again and come to a conclusion with this. Thank you.
Thank you, Rosemary. Next, we have Marissa Gonzalez.
For all my relations, namaste. I'm a higher self, and a higher selves. I'm here to speak for my tonight, not expecting...
Microphone, please.
So quickly, based on the mathematical breakdown when it comes to housing, humans are not numbers. We are people. We are all here regardless of whether we believe in God or not. We come to this earth by a higher source. We will all leave because of that higher source. We are on a planet here together. So when it comes to housing and developers, developers are into it for the money. It's a simple mathematical breakdown. They go into it regarding business. There's a certain amount of money that they're going to put out, so they want a certain amount of money to come back. So every unit that's going to be rented, they look at meeting their quotas. Once their quotas are met, including their profits, as the years go by, realistically, the housing prices should go lower because their profits have already been met. So we should not be looked upon as numbers and what numbers we're going to fulfill, but to be looked at as a human race and for us as a people, as a one race, not in separation by politics or governments. We are on this planet together. So the housing element realistically is pretty simple. It's just numbers, so let's not make it so difficult. And as far as the ceasefire and what's going on across the world, I am indigenous to this land from being born as a native Californian. Across the Americas, my father from Mexico, my mother from El Salvador. This country was based on a genocide. So there is a global genocide that has been going on, on this planet for thousands of years, in this country for hundreds of years. So from my heart to yours, this is a moral foundation that we stand on. The children are watching. We as adults are portraying either love or not. So the bottom line across the board is, love is God, and God is love. Let's just get back to simplicity. If this was happening here in the U.S., if this was happening, what's going on, whether it's in Palestine, Israel, or all the other parts of the world, we are one. So together, let's come together with love, in love, for peace, for food, air, water, and shelter. Let's just make it better for all of us together. Let's stop the fighting. Let's humble ourselves. And that's really all I have to say.
Thank you, Marissa. Thank you. Quiet, please. Thank you. Any comments online, Weston?
No raised hands for general public comment, Mayor.
Okay, all right. Well, we will move on to item number three, discussion item number three. Introduction of four ordinances modifying the structure of the planning, historic preservation, arts, and parks and recreation commissions. Do we have a staff report, Mr. City Attorney?
Briefly. So this is an item we've seen a couple of times before. The ordinances before you reflect the discussion at the October 24th meeting, and I'll just give a summary, which is page four of the staff report. For the Planning Commission, five commissioners, maximum of two non-city resident commissioners if the council deems it necessary to secure specialized expertise or knowledge. Nominations to be by the mayor, a committee of the mayor, a rotating council member as determined by the clerk, and the commission chair, to four-year terms with no changes to current commissioner terms, so no connection between elections and council elections and commission terms. Just whatever the terms are, they'll continue as they are, four-year terms. For the Historic Preservation Commission, seven commissioners, maximum of three non-city residents, the same nomination process, the mayor, a rotating council member, the commission chair, to make nominations to four-year terms. For the Arts Commission, up to seven commissioners. Here, it's an allowance expressly that the council could choose to appoint five, six, or seven commissioners. That whatever number of commissioners is appointed, there'd be a majority of city residents. Same process for nominations. The mayor, a rotating council member is determined by the clerk and the commission chair, also to four-year terms. For the Parks and Rec Commission, seven commissioners plus one non-voting youth commissioner, maximum of three non-city resident commissioners out of the seven. Same nomination process by the mayor, a rotating council member as determined by the clerk and the commission chair, to four-year terms with no changes to current terms. And the youth commissioner nominated by the mayor with the two-year term and certain schooling requirements. And then for all commissions, eliminated all of the quorum and residency ties. So what that means is, for a five-member commission quorum is three, for a seven-member commission quorum is four, those quorums of three or four can be built by any combination of residents or non-residents. That won't matter in determining if a commission can meet. All that will matter is, are there three or four members, as applicable, appointed to the commission? Removal of any commissioner would be at-will by council majority vote at a regular council meeting, not a special meeting, but only after two members of the council members give notice to the city manager of the intended removal, who would then inform the commissioner, who would then have at least seven days to decide to resign if they so chose, or to not resign and thus object. If the commissioner chose not to resign, as would be fine, that would be back-informed to the two council members who could choose to press it or let it go. If they chose to press it, then the commissioner up for consideration of removal would have to be given an opportunity to speak to the council before consideration of their removal at the meeting. And then for any unscheduled vacancies, of course, the Mati Act applies, which includes that there'd be at least 10 working days after posting notice of the unscheduled vacancy before making a final replacement commission appointment. With that, staff is available for any questions on these ordinances. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. Any questions from council? We have gone over this several times.
Indeed. It's a long process, but I would suggest it's an example of decision-making by committee that can work successfully.
Yes.
Albeit a little...
And we are very grateful to you for holding on to all the details.
Happy to.
No questions?
Well, no.
Mayor Protem?
Wasn't, didn't we also include that before we remove anybody, that we go and talk to them? Didn't we?
It's in there. He just mentioned it.
Yeah, so that's in there.
I'm sorry if I missed it.
No, no, yeah, that's in there, and the requirement is that the two council members who raise the question go to the manager, who would then go to the commissioner.
But that's not what I understood. I thought that council members went to the, would speak. If I'm observing a commission meeting and I'm unhappy with something that goes on, I, you know, we're all free to just...
It gives note, you give notice. The council members give notice to the city manager.
And it wouldn't prevent you from...
Microphones, please.
But the process requires that at least...
Andy, microphone, sorry.
Okay. So the process require, so you're free to talk to any commissioner that you want about what you've observed and your concerns. But what it does require is that whenever two council members notify the city manager that they are interested in pursuing a removal, that the city manager is required to go talk to that person and give them the option of resigning or having a hearing, depending on their preference. That's how we've set, you know, that's our process to hopefully avoid having full-blown hearings on switching out.
Are you good with that?
Yeah, so if I could, I think, so the...
Can we just, we're still on questions for, for, okay.
Clarification?
Yeah, sure.
Okay, I think this will answer your question. So by going through the city manager, then there's a record of... So, by going through the city manager, then there's a record of, then everything, if it's just two council members, there can be information that's misconstrued or misunderstandings. And if the city manager is the one who's handling that step of the process, then it just keeps things cleaner. It offers a record and it keeps things cleaner.
If you're good, I'm good.
Yeah, I'm good with that.
Okay. Can we move on to public comments? First, we have Brian Akins and then Chair Smitty.
He's back. I stand before you, Chair of the Historic Preservation Commission. The historic nature is the fact that I've been on this commission after we've gone round and around and around to this. So, I'm happy to report that I think through the deliberations that have taken place several times this year, that you've picked off the highlights of all of the different discussions that have taken place over the years. So, I'm happy with this. Three things, four things. Thank you for getting to where we are at a second reading. I think this is a second reading. Well, I'm looking at Weston.
So, this is the introduction of the ordinance, and then it would come back on the 28th for a second reading and adoption.
Oh, I thought this was.
This is the introduction of the, whatever version number we're up to, revised ordinance.
Okay. I don't want to use my time. Okay, so, second thing, so, with this in place or once it's in place, and we'll know what that is, we'll be working to get to our seven members. We are, interesting to note that in this year, three commissions have been, three new commissioners have been placed, one there, one there, and one there. So, three out of five of you have actually nominated HPC commissioners. We are now at five. We had a wonderful meeting last Thursday. It was a long meeting. We were talking about some things that we're trying to get straightened out.
That was a long meeting. Now, you're reminding me, it was three hours.
Four. By the time we went.
Yeah. That's right. Okay.
So, three. The other thing that we did that's important is that we did unanimously put forth the resolution for the HPC awards for this year, for the annual awards. Three individuals are receiving that and a lifetime award. And so, I asked that the, that resolution go to you on the second hearing, on the 28th of November, so that then you can decide whether it goes forward or not. And hopefully, that'll go forward, and then the city can order the plaques and we can make that presentation in the one meeting in December. Seems rushed, but I have to tell you, this is the 10th year. I've been involved in it. Every year, it seems rushed. So, that's item number three. And number four is, again, I would just like to, when you finish this item today, just if you could relay the timeframe so that each of us commissioners or chairs know what timeframe we're looking for. But right now, as I discussed with Weston, we're looking to January. So, we'll see you then.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks, Brian. Is Smitty still here?
Yeah.
Hi, again, everybody. So, this is my pitch for, hello, for you to maybe just consider changing the residence requirement for the arts commission only, okay? So, I'll try to do my three minutes. Souza, thank you. I loved your statements about our, it wasn't your words, but our sort of stone age city limit sort of requirements or the arbitrariness with how the city limits are and how it affects things. Well, I think it's particularly true with the arts commission or the artist community, I'll say anyways, in the Ojai Valley. Here's some just bullet points. I mentioned last time again, our Ojai Studio Artist Tour, one of the most respected arts organizations in the town. Only 14 of the 64 stops or studios were within the city limits. But I think if you saw the names of the artists, you'd say, these are our Ojai artists. There's a reason they don't live here, and I think, why do you think our artists live outside the city? And maybe you've talked about that earlier.
But that's really an important point, yeah.
Secondly, our mural jury met today. Within 30 days, we called a mural, need for a mural jury to appoint, to approve Summer Camp's beautiful mural. We got them together. We met today and approved it, and it'll be coming back, I guess, through the planning commission. But on my way out the door, I said, how many of you guys are, live in the city? Only one of the six. So, I mean, we did that blind, but we picked qualified people quickly to do an ad hoc thing, and that just gives you an example where we found them anyways to. Sometime between now and the end of the year, I may need up to four new commissioners on the arts commission. Nigel has tendered his resignation today, and we do want to go to seven to work out our plan. So, just from a selfish standpoint, Smitty wants to kind of move ahead, and I don't want to have to fire anyone or fire myself, I guess. Our arts grants, let's talk about money. I asked several of you, why do you have this requirement? And I haven't got a strong answer, I don't think, in terms of arts anyways. For instance, the arts grants, which is our largest budget item, we give, there's no requirement that grant applicants be in the city limits, you know, because I think we already recognize within the council and commission that art transcends what any of the political instrument, boundaries are. I think we're unlike the other commissions because geography doesn't reflect anything to do with our community. We would like to, flexibility to be able to, we would like the flexibility to be able to appoint arts commissioners from anywhere if they love Ojai and can help with our arts plan. So, one more sentence, may I? Yes. You'd still have a check because the council votes, okay, if anything should change. And if Beatrice Wood or Otto Hino were alive today, I would love to have them on the arts commission, but we couldn't have them on the arts commission because they lived in Upper Ojai on the east end.
Thank you, Smitty. Any comments online, Weston?
No raised hands for item three, Mayor.
Okay, we will move on to discussion. Who would like to begin? Mayor Protem?
Okay, so, Smitty made the important point that I would agree that most artists probably live outside the city, and, which brings up, it's really a question of equity, too. They live outside the city in part, or maybe even mostly because it's much more affordable. And through the years, when I start thinking of artists, I knew, we knew Beatrice Wood before she was famous, and she was poor, and she could not, there's no way she could live in the city now if she came as a young woman. So, I would, I think we should ponder this point under arts commissioner, a commission, majority of city resident commissioners. Is there some way to word that with some flexibility, if the other council members might consider that change?
Yeah, the council could use language similar to the planning commission language, that there's a preference for city residents. Let me get the exact language. The, while it's preferred that all members of the commission have primary residence to be domiciled within the city, and then either a numeric maximum or just commission members may be domiciled outside the city if determined necessary by the council. That's an option. So, it'd be a preference for the, for city residents, but not a requirement. The other option would be just to strike the residency language entirely.
Are you finished, Mayor Protem?
No. I would be, I'd be comfortable to not have this majority of city resident commissioners in there, to just not, you know, you just get the best artists that are willing to volunteer their time.
Mother, are you finished?
Okay, no, no. And then, I know that, you know, what could happen with the planning commission, and I believe this is your goal, is that you have a planning commission that's all city residents, the way it's worded now, right? That's.
It could be.
Yeah. So, I, okay, where it says maximum of two non-city resident commissioners if council deems necessary to secure specialized expertise. I think you should expand that to say that, first of all, you might not get applicants that live in the city, and they may not be, have expertise. There could be all kinds of reasons why you, I really like the idea of the planning commission having at least, even required to have a non-city resident, because it's also the fact of the matter that only the rich will be able to afford to serve on these commissions. Only rich people, until we have affordable housing, they can't, you know, the housing is so much less expensive in Oakview and Miners Oaks, and we're always talking about equity. So, I don't know if you're still wedded to having, I know we've gone over this, and I'm just as attached to my point of view as you are to yours, but I really like having a non-city resident, because the valley is so much bigger than the four-point mile city limit. So, I mean, maybe it'll work out, but maybe, I don't know. I don't know. But anyway, if the council deems necessary to secure specialized expertise, maybe that's the compromise that you made, and I can live with it, but I'm not entirely happy about it. Okay, I'm done.
Councilmember Lang.
So, I, I, I think that the way that we've worded the planning commission, I think it does open up, it does keep a flexibility there for someone outside of the city. I don't feel like it limits us from having someone within the city. I think if we had language that said we had, like, we have to have one person from outside of the city, then we're limited if we don't get applications. And, and, you know, I think, what, go ahead.
They might not be an expert, though.
But the.
Historically, we have had to go outside the city in order to find two special skilled planning commissioners.
Architects or landscape architects.
Yeah, the people who are described in the ordinance. So, I have.
Look, Councilmember Lang, are you finished?
I wanted to make one more point, and that is, you know, I agree with you about the arts commission, about having, changing the language to say the, something about the preference, but that we're not limiting it. The valley is just full of so many incredible artists, and there's so much expertise here. And we see that with our current arts commission. I think the arts commission is different than some of the other ones. Because of the specialization of it. And so, I would, I would be in favor of modifying that language. And, you know, the chair, the chair made a very salient point about that. And that, with that change, I am for moving forward with this. We have really, I think we have really come together and worked together to come up with a solid ordinance, and I'm very happy with the changes that we made that create a protocol for removal and for managing some of the issues that we have had just this last year.
Okay. Councilmember Whitman, did you want to?
So, it sounds like the only place where there's an issue is on the arts commission. But I can see being flexible. You know, Souza said, can we get some language that allows for it to be a majority of non-residents? And if that's the way things fall, I agree, I'm fine with the idea that arts has a majority of non-residents, but I don't want to pass over city residents in order to do that.
No, no, no. Let's not flip it. Let's not, let's just make it.
So, Ken, yeah, so my suggestion is that we say something, we leave the majority of city resident commissioners, but a majority of non-resident commissioners is permissible if the circumstances require it.
Councilmember Rule?
If you think of something better.
We could certainly craft the language. I might suggest for arts, given its realities, it may be wise to just strike the residency language entirely for arts, assisting from the others.
Yeah. That's what I'm thinking.
An option to consider.
I would be in favor of that option.
Councilmember Rule?
Yeah, I'm in favor of that. I'm sorry to throw this monkey wrench in, but as I've been thinking over these last iterations and how we got where we are, I would like to have some sort of principle or statement saying that these offices, these commissioners, these appointments are non-political. We have heard the mayor say that she believes these to be political. We have other council members who have indicated in ways, one way or another, that they believe them to be political. And I think it's very important that we state in principle that these are not political appointments. I think it's very dangerous to start talking about political appointments, especially when you're talking about how you've already culled the planning department, and I am uncomfortable leaving that open. I would like a vote on that. I think it's, I think in principle, it's immensely important that we say that these are not political appointments. We don't appoint people so that they will carry out, you know, our political agendas. I think that is very narrow, and I think we have to make a stand one way or the other, and I would like a conversation on that issue, be it yea or be it nay. Be honest, be truthful, and let's just go ahead and see where we stand on the issue. No dancing around.
Okay, well, we'll wait for a motion. I'd like to make a comment. And just to clarify, what I meant was, when I said they're political, it's because five elected officials are making appointments. So, that, let me finish, please. And back to the arts commission, thank you, Chair Smitty, for speaking on that. And I agree that we should be more flexible, and it makes sense since most of the artists live outside of town. So, that the word preference, I think.
Yep, preference.
Councilmember Whitman, you brought that up, giving preference to city residents and then, you know, right, no limitations. And I agree with the way that the planning commission is worded right now, and I think, you know, we have this phrase in there, if council deems necessary to secure specialized expertise, and I think that protects us. I'd also like to say thank you to all the commissioners, the chairs and the commissioners for working so hard and giving your time and expertise and love to our community, and it's just a great boon to all of us. So, thanks to all the commissions. And also, thank you to our staff, particularly Matt Summers for, it's been a bit of an endurance race, and I really appreciate my council members, my colleagues, for putting in the time and the effort and the thought to really make this a useful and user-friendly ordinance. So, is there anyone who would like to make a motion? Yes.
I will, but I also wanted to speak to what you mentioned, because I, I agree, this is very, it's very important that we, that these, that we let the community know that we're not making political decisions, that we really value that amazing wealth of knowledge and expertise of the people in our commissions who are serving. And I want to just also go back and say that when we decided on the selection process, and we decided to have it be a committee selection process between the mayor, one council member who is rotating, and the chair, that that, that protocol was specifically for the reason of separating politics from commission appointments. So, I don't necessarily feel that we need specific language about this not being political, because if we have three individuals who are two elected, one volunteer, making this selection together, I feel like there's a collaboration that's inherent within that process. But I'm open if anyone else wants to change that language.
So, I, you said exactly what I was going to say. We've changed the selection process so that it now is not an individual selecting the person of their choice. It's now three people that are making this selection. It's now three people that are making this selection. And I also think it would be virtually impossible to enforce a no-political selection. How would, what, what would be the criteria for, oh, that selection was political, no, that one was not.
Are you finished?
Yeah.
Okay, Councilmember Rule?
I'm just saying, as a general principle, because we did have it in the paper where the mayor said, I believe this to be a political process. And there is, there is a impression that the removal of Jeffrey Starkweather was a political decision. Whether or not, it's not an argument, whether or not you want to agree it was or it wasn't, there is certainly the impression that it was a political dismissal, and...
I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask the council member to refrain from bringing up the past and just focus on this agenda item.
Point of order, Mayor, I'm gonna have to ask you not to be ridiculous, not to bring up the past, the last, the last things that this is part of.
But we focus on the ordinance and...
I'm talking about the ordinance, and I'm talking about why I think it's very important that we have a statement of principle. This was all of a month ago, two months ago. So when you talk about the past, that was on the front page of the paper, okay? And so we may decide, you may decide...
I'm gonna ask you to stay in the present moment.
I am in the present moment. Excuse me, Mayor, you are not, excuse me, you are not, I'm sorry, Mayor, but you are not in a position...
No, you can appeal the chair's ruling.
Yeah, I will appeal. I'm gonna appeal the chair's ruling so that I can finish my conversation because the mayor doesn't want to talk about the past that was two months ago.
Could you please make a motion if you want to?
Yeah, I, I made a motion. I'm going to appeal the mayor's decision that I not continue with this conversation.
And is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay.
But, but don't go on and on.
I will make it brief. I will make it brief.
Well, then we have to have a, we have to have a roll call for that.
Can we discuss about, can we, can we have a...
There's a motion and a second.
Friendly discussion, for God's sake.
Okay, hold on, Councilmember.
Let me just make a suggestion. Maybe this will make everybody happy, maybe it won't. Why don't we, we've spent so many hours on this. Why don't we approve what we have with the one modification we've proposed for the arts? If councilmember Rule wants to bring forward a policy for the city council to adopt that is going to be some type of a guidance in the selection process, then, you know, let's do that at some future point when you've figured out what language you want to propose to us.
I will accept that, and, but I, I also want to say to the mayor, do not try to censor me. Do not say that something that happened two months ago is in the past.
You're out of order.
You're out of order.
Can we have a motion here? Is somebody ready for a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, thank you.
I will move to adopt this ordinance with the language modifications for the arts commission that we discussed.
One adjustment, it's introduction of the four ordinances, plural.
Yes, oh, I'm sorry, thank you so much, City Attorney.
Okay, and we have a second?
Yes.
Okay, roll call, please.
I have a discussion point. When did this ordinance start? When did we start with this ordinance? Like, was it two months ago? Three months ago?
Staff report has the dates. It goes back to May of 23.
May of 23. Does that count as the past?
Actually, it goes back farther. It's April 11th, 23.
Does that count as the past? Just out of curiosity? Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, could we have a roll call, please, Weston?
Yes, and also City Attorney, is it the striking of the...
Yeah, my understanding of the motion is that it's introduce the four ordinances for the planning commission, the historic preservation commission, the Parks and Rec commission, and the arts commission with one change in section 4-16.101 for the arts commission created to strike the sentence that reads, "A majority of the commission shall be residents of the city, such that the arts commission shall have flexibilities to residency."
Okay. All right, we have a roll call?
Understood. Roll call. Mayor Protem Francina.
Yes.
Mayor, Mayor Sticks.
Yes.
Councilmember Whitman.
Yes.
Councilmember Lang.
Yes.
Councilmember Rule.
Yes.
All right, wonderful. Motion passes 5-0. All right, we will move on to item number four. Introduction of an ordinance adopting a local tenant preference policy for lower-income, deed-restricted, affordable housing. We have a staff report, Mr. City Attorney?
Yes, one moment to switch from A to B. What's before you is a proposed ordinance that would adopt a SB 649, Senate Bill 649, rent, I'm sorry, not rent disclosure, local tenant preference, again rental, rental focus. This is a, a policy allowed by state law. State law, as you know, allows, somewhat limited text state law, a city to adopt a preference policy for persons who are lower income and residing in a neighborhood in a community experiencing significant displacement, with that being people who are experiencing significant displacement pressures and gentrification due to rapid growth or increasing housing prices. It allows cities to adopt a tenant preference, not requirement, preference policy for applicable rental housing projects. And what's proposed in, is a policy embodied really in the Exhibit A to the ordinance that is, that would provide for an affordable housing project owner to provide preference to de-restricted affordable housing tenancy applicants who meet a couple of qualifications. They reside at the time of their application, and at least three months before, in the Ojai area of interest or sphere of influence. So that means the city limits plus the sphere of influence, which is the area that the city per LAFCO is likely eventually to annex into, and the sphere of influence, which is the larger area as defined by the Ventura County Local Agency Formation Commission for what parts of the county are appropriately within the oversight of the cities. We don't have land use power in the sphere of influence, but per the city-county deal from about 20 years ago, longer than that, 40 years ago, the county is required to consult with the city on major land use decisions. So it's expanding to that, which is roughly the Ojai Valley. It picks up Casita Springs, Miners Oaks, the East End, and the city of Ojai. And the mapping is available on the city's website. So live in that area. Our income-eligible households for the applicable de-restruction, this goes back to the prior point. If it's a very low unit, they're very low income. If it's a low-income unit, they're low income. Are facing or are at risk of displacement from their current residence, and then meet all other applicable qualifications to rent a unit in the de-restricted affordable housing project, which picks up whatever other requirements there might be for that unit in that project. Now, the requirement is that each affordable housing owner, subject to the policy, will develop a particular protocol for implementing the preference policy. And the idea was to bake in flexibility, mindful that depending on the funding source for a de-restricted affordable unit, they might already be required to do a lottery, or they might be prohibited from doing a lottery. It might be only first come, first served. It might be first come, first served with paper applications, or first come, first served with online applications. We wanted to preserve maximum flexibility in this draft to reflect that we, we don't know how each of the projects will come forward, but to preserve flexibility. So that's baked in that language there, requiring development of a policy. And also in section six, by which the council, if approved, would delegate to the community development director the power to approve an alternative tenant selection plan that would affirmably further affordable housing opportunities for lower-income persons experiencing significant displacement pressures. Again, trying to bake in some flexibility to allow the mechanics to be worked out project by project, but the idea to be a preference for persons who are lower income, live in the Ojai area of interest or sphere of influence, and are facing displacement pressure. I would note, this is where I meant, my earlier comment is, is applicable. I agree with the two suggestions by Ms. Barbara McCree Ortiz, the attorney for Cabrillo. Those two suggestions are in section four, that the evidence of residency be for proof of residency, not of the city, but in the sphere of influence or the Ojai area of interest, to match the residency section, make section four and section three match. And then second, in section six, that it be an alternative tenant selection plan that would affirmably further fair housing as opposed to affordable housing opportunities for lower-income persons. And the distinction there is to pick up the reality that all of this is still subject to state and local and federal fair housing laws that prohibit discrimination on the basis of any protected category, race, national origin, veteran status, et cetera. And we, we, of course, would not violate those policies. So with that...
Can you go back to six that you just covered and tell me which words would go out and which would go in?
Sure, so it's, I'll just read the, the, I'll read it full. Section six, city council approval of exemption, director approval of alternative compliance plan. The city council may, at its discretion, approve an affordable housing project as exempt from this policy. The city council hereby delegates the power to the community development director to, at his or her discretion, approve an alternative tenant selection plan that affirmably furthers fair, instead of affordable, housing opportunities for lower-income persons experiencing significant displacement pressures.
Got it.
Did you say that was section six?
Yes. I'm sorry, section six of the policy, which is on page...
Yeah, it's Exhibit A.
4-7.
It's Exhibit A, which is one, yeah, it's this.
Yeah, not section six of the ordinance.
Okay, I was looking for that.
Sorry about that, yeah. I, I was focusing on the policy.
Okay, okay.
And with that, staffs, if there are any questions, or...
Okay, Councilmember Whitman?
Did you, did you model this off of some other municipality's effort to do this?
I did with a couple of source documents. There are a number of cities that have adopted similar policies. They range from very complex to very simple. We sort of stuck on the simpler end, mindful that we have different kinds of affordable housing projects that need to bake in flexibility. The models we looked at were Pasadena, South Pasadena, Berkeley, and one or two more in the area that I forget, but can email the council. We tried to look at a couple of different samples.
When they're, when, of the more complex ones that you looked at, what type of issues were they addressing in theirs that we're not addressing here?
The more complex ones, pick it up in a couple of categories. One is, they break apart the preferences, and most of them were adopted before SB 649 and tap, and either tap into earlier city-specific laws or tap into the general, they tap into city-funded affordable housing, where the, the land, city landlord can be more restrictive as long as it doesn't violate the fair housing laws. So they, they break apart preference for people who live in a given area, and they break it apart by how long they've lived in the area, exactly what part of the area they live in, at what level of, where are they on the experiencing significant displacement scale? Are they currently unhoused, recently unhoused, at significant risk, at moderate risk? Sort of break apart that, those sets of categories. The other one that some cities would do is break apart based on, if they are a family with children, that comes ahead of singletons, sort of...
Singletons.
Aspects of their circumstances, and break it apart. The other, the other aspect that you see from the more complex policies is mandating a lottery and then having very detailed provisions governing those lotteries.
We're proposing to leave that type of an issue up to the community development director to work with the owner of the project and devise a plan that is fair.
And the idea would be up to the developer, the owner, project owners, to devise a plan and then present it to the city for approval. And that would likely be a conversation. And the idea is to bake in some flexibility because of one, two aspects. One, we don't yet know what will work for the developers in our smaller community. And two, the kinds of projects we're likely to see that this would apply to are going to be in two flavors. De-restricted units with private financing, as is common for a 20-unit project that has 5% very low income, that would be, that would be one very low-income unit. That's private financing. They're not using the tax credit financing. And so they have more flexibility in how they structure these things versus 100% affordable 80-unit project. That's going to be almost certainly tax credit financed, which has a whole bunch of more restrictive requirements imposed by their tax, the taxing entities. But we're trying to bake in flexibility depending on how we get on a de-restricted affordable unit.
So I have one last question.
Sure.
And that is, it sounds like typically we're dealing with a much bigger city, and so there are zones within the city, or it's more geographic. It seems like in the case of Ojai, the entire city boundaries are potentially at risk. The risk factor is more the income level and the amount of...
And the circumstances of the person, yeah.
Yeah, the market rate for rents. So is, are we at any risk if we don't address that issue, or, or?
I'm not, I don't think we're at a risk.
Maybe do we make, do we have, should we make a finding?
The key there is that income isn't a protected, isn't a protected class. Part of the, the idea of looking at this as more than just the pure city limits is the fact that our city demographically is of a certain sort, and we want to avoid risk under fair housing laws where a policy that could be viewed as a preference for a certain sort is potentially at risk. The valley is a different demographic, it's a little, it's more reflective of the county as a whole, somewhat more reflective of the county as a whole, and is broad enough that, that there is a greater defensibility there.
Got it.
Mayor Protem?
Okay, I have to confess, I didn't read this as closely as I would have liked. So I want to know, I want to know, does it address the people that work here, that are now commuting, especially...
This policy does not. This is structured to match the SB 649 structure, which is tied to persons who are residents of an area and facing displacement risk. Some cities have expanded it to capture, and other policies have expanded it to capture people who work in an area. We, we didn't draft that based on the council's direction to adopt, go with SB 649 for this draft.
Okay, because we want to make sure that we do address that because we're, people are arguing that this is going to, you know, any housing is going to increase traffic. And our counterargument is that people who are now commuting will be able to live here. You know, so we want to make sure that it's addressed somewhere. The other thing that keeps popping into my mind is because we currently don't have affordable housing, there's quite a number of people who have lived here for decades that are now living in Fillmore or God knows where, who would love to die in Ojai, you know? So to put, you know, so...
Do you have a question?
Oh, is that for...
We're still on questions.
Okay. So, so, okay, my question is, are we addressing that?
So there's two questions inherent in there. Are we addressing the situation of persons who lived in Ojai before but have been displaced? This ordinance does not pick them up. This picks it up if persons are at risk of displacement but haven't yet been displaced. That language could be adjusted to allow for people who reside or have resided within X amount of time before. That could be adjusted to pick it up if the council desired it. The other point, if I can make one key factual clarification, there are deed-restricted affordable units existing in the city right now in two categories, two places. There's a small project on, what is it, Montgomery? That's owned by Cabrillo and run by Cabrillo. I believe it has a very long waitlist, but it does exist.
Yes.
And there's also Whispering Oaks, run by the Ojai, the area housing authority, owned by the county. So there are existing...
Those are long waitlists.
I realize the waitlist is long, but I, I don't want state regulators who are listening to think that we don't have any affordable housing. We do have existing de-restricted affordable housing. It's just also occupied.
All right, any other questions from council? Councilmember Rule?
So, but, but the folks that are on the waiting list at either Montgomery Oaks or Whispering Oaks, they really wouldn't be, unless they were already Ojai residents. This does not really, does not really capture them and/or, I mean...
But that's what we want to do. We can capture them. We can change the language.
To the people on...
People on the waiting list.
You know, I, okay, we can talk about it during discussion. I think that there are some issues around that that I'd like to discuss.
Any other questions from council? All right, we will move on to public comment. First, we have Larry Steingold, then Bill Miley, then Nora Harold.
Larry Steingold, city resident. I support SB 649 any way you do it, okay? How you cut and slice and try to, you know, put an elephant through a needle, I don't care, okay? You're city councilors, you're the mayor. City residents, Ojai residents, the valley, influence, the whole bit, show that you care about the people who live here. You have Nora Harold, who said she has to relocate, okay? You have people here who were pre-COVID, that they now have had to get out because prices went up. They had to, they got thrown out. Those people count. People who had to leave and maybe they want to come back, they count. The people on the list who live in Ojai, they count. You can put it all together, but pass it tonight, and then do what you do with every other law. Make the change in a month. Make the adaptation. Make the review. Make whatever you have to... Make the adaptation, make the review, make whatever you have to do, but pass it tonight so you get it on the books. So six four nine residents in Ojai get picked first or have preference. And then maybe give a time limit. Give people who live within the city three weeks to sign up. Give the next tranche three more weeks and then just keep expanding the wheel or the vortex, whatever you want to call it. Spiral. But seriously, okay, pass it tonight, get it done, show that you represent the city, the rep, who people who put you in office, the voters, the city residents. Thank you.
Thank you, Larry. Uh, next we have Bill Miley, then Nora Harold, then Andy Gilman.
Good evening. For the record, my name is Bill Miley. It's a good state law. I want to give credit to the council members that placed this on the agenda. Do you know our housing element has a chart that shows fifty percent plus or minus of our renters are cost burdened? They're paying more than thirty percent of their household income for rent? Six hundred!
Try a hundred percent.
Six hundred! Families are cost burdened in this town, and they're all eligible under six forty nine. Several issues arise. One arrives. Defining who's at risk of the housing displacement. As I read the state law, there's no clear definition. What exists is, and I wrote you this, and I said, see below, chapter twelve seventy six. It's the policy of the state of California that lower-income individuals residing in neighborhoods and communities experience significant displacement pressures and gentifications, gentification, due to rapid growth and increasing housing prices, need access to housing that is affordable and that assists those housing households in avoiding displacement. That's the description. How do you determine who? And then it goes on to talk about, the base is thirty percent and overpayment, over, for rent seems to be the key factor, plus the three-month requirement for being in the city. How are the applicants going to be managed? Lottery? The attorney spoke to them. Time limits by dates, family sizes? How will folks be notified? Who approves the selection process? Who oversees the process of selection? Maybe the developer's wife selects them, I don't know, or husband, or kid, I don't know. Do folks with lower incomes down on this chart get preference based on the affordable housing unit's classification? If it was approved for very low, only those who would be eligible for very low would win. Summary, the intent is really good. It seems the application is complicated in being openly fair and equitable. I read in the law that its basis is state and federal fair housing laws. That's serious. I want to suggest that our real estate board and our chamber of commerce be involved in drafting the protocols to make this work. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
Six hundred families would be eligible.
Uh, next we have Nora Harold, then Andy Gilman.
Uh, I completely support the passing of this. I hope that you will include, uh, all residents of the Ojai Valley in whatever way works. I, you know, if you have to do city first, I think that, fine, that makes sense. This is the city, but then you expand it out. Um, so I really support that. The Becker Project would not have solved my housing needs. The Becker Project would not have solved my housing needs. I want to be clear. There was nothing affordable in that for me. The bullying I saw here tonight by Souza, you do it with a smile on your face, but it's still.
Excuse me?
The bullying I saw here tonight by Souza, you do it with a smile on your face, but it's still bullying, and Leslie, when you raise your voice and point, does not create a safe space for any of you or any of us.
I have to say, Nora, neither do you. Neither do you.
Well, I don't even know what she's talking about.
No, it's just, it's, it's enough.
No, excuse me, uh, we don't attack, um, our speakers.
I'm not attacking her unless she's attacking me, since all I'm doing is responding to her.
I'd love to continue, thank you. Well, I got up here and I said what I said, and then you both demonstrated those behaviors. You know, when I came up to talk about the way I'd been treated here by Souza and other members of the community, Andy and Betsy and Rachel sat there and did not say a word. They didn't look at Souza and say, yeah, Souza, you should apologize. It's not okay when you do it. You don't have your council members' backs publicly. It's not okay when you do it. It's violence.
Thank you, Nora. Next we have Andy Gilman.
All right, all right. Thank you. Um, very briefly, I support this one hundred percent in principle. I think it's what we have to do. Uh, Matt, if I understood you correctly, I would love us to pass it tonight. I think Larry suggested that. And if that means that there is the flexibility, if I understood you right, so that we can pass it tonight, I favor that very much instead of taking months figuring out a, a large hierarchy. So working with each individual project, what they can do and what they can't, that's going to be necessary. I love the valley-wide idea, and Souza, I'm with you a hundred percent with people who don't live here anymore or people who work here but don't live here. But there's, if I heard Cabrillo correctly, there's a long waitlist and we're going to have to go with some objective criteria, obviously, we all know that. And I think I want to respond to what Nora brought up too. In that help of Ojai video they mentioned, which I think you all know, there's no one project that's going to solve this problem. It's a bunch of projects, it's websites, it's making everything that's available known as much as possible. So there's not going to be one solution, there's going to be many solutions. So I hope you do pass it tonight with the flexibility that we can work with each project and then bring it to you to decide. Right? You get to approve if, if it's going to work or not, but I love the idea of us looking to our citizens first. I think we all agree with that, but let's not overly delay to try to include every possibility. My suggestion. Thanks.
Thank you. Andy, any comments online, Weston?
No, Bear, but let's give the option. Um, if any Zoom attendants would like to speak on item four, please raise your hand now. And no raised hands.
Okay, all right, we will move on to discussion. Uh, who would like, Councilmember Rule?
Yeah, I'm going to start, um, because I found this ordinance by reading through a hundred and sixty-two housing laws. Um, and I brought this up eight months ago, the past, so I'm incredibly pleased and I want to thank Matt for this absolutely fine job. This is a great job that you've done. Um, and I know that it wasn't easy and I, and I did not realize that you would, uh, expand your horizons to look at, at towns, you know, cities that have done this. And I know that city, city-produced projects are able to do this much easier. So, um, I am really pleased that after eight months, that this has finally made it here. Um, when I first started thinking about this oh-so-long ago, it really was because in my district, um, which is a lot of rentals, um, people were losing their housing. Um, the houses were being sold and the individuals that had lived there with, uh, affordable rents were being booted. And, um, it just, and I could see, you know, I knew what houses were rentals and I knew that it was only a matter of time until the shoe dropped. And these were people that I ended up knowing, walking with, talking to. So that was the intent for me, was to keep it very local, um, to start protecting the people in town who, because of the change after COVID, would, and, you know, um, they would have an option. And I don't, I understand what's going on here, that, that, you know, I hadn't even thought sphere of influence, and I might not even agree, but given your rationalization for why, or your justification for why sphere of influence, then I definitely do agree, um, because we do need to protect ourselves from any kind of blowback or litigation. Um, but to everyone's point, I would like to move this forward, and it would be my druthers to move this forward with, um, keeping it within our sphere of influence and people that do lose their housing. Um, if, if, if there are local residents that are on the waiting list, you know, of Montgomery Oaks, but really it was to, it was to give some sort of reassurance to people who were living in homes that were just waiting for that shoe to drop, you know, and to try to take away some of that stress from their life, that if that shoe does drop, there's an option for them that doesn't send them into, you know, another state, another county or whatever. So it would be my druthers, like I said, to keep it as confined as we can to people in the Ojai Valley who lose their housing, rather than, you know, if you have housing in Fillmore, you can come back or something like that. We just, we don't have that many units. We have forty-nine, you know, we don't know how many units we have, but we don't have, you know, we don't have endless units. We have very limited units, very limited.
Councilmember Lang?
Yes, um, I also agree with Larry, Andy, and all, and, and Councilmember Rule and all who spoke on behalf of adopting this as soon as possible. Every day we have people like Nora and John losing their home, and we don't want to lose the people, we don't want to lose the members of our community. It's, it's heartbreaking. Um, I, so I am for adopting this tonight and then making modifications. I like the idea of opening this to the sphere of influence, to keeping it in the Ojai Valley. Um, I also, I'm, I am interested in, um, in Councilmember, or in Mayor Protem Francina's, uh, uh, point about people who work here, um, like people who work at the inn. I, I'm, I'm wondering if there is a way that we can incorporate language around that too. Um, so work, live, and, um, and people who have been displaced within a five-year, or like a three-to-five-year period of time. I'm open to suggestions on that, but I, I think we need to time-cap it, or like cap the time.
Yeah.
For displacement, um, you know, so that, yeah, so that it, it keeps it fair.
So can we do that?
I mean, one option would be to say that the preference is expanded to include folks who reside or work in the area of interest or sphere of influence, or resided within it in some defined period of time in the past, past three years, five years, one year, pick a, pick a number. Um, the other option there would be to set it as a two-step. Step one is a preference for folks who reside now in the, uh, area interest, interest and sphere of influence. Preference two would be persons who work in those areas or who, who resided within the last five years but don't currently reside. That would be another way to, to get there.
I, I like that. Um, I like the two-step. Um, and then also I'm thinking that if we are going to cap the year, that if we, if we keep it at, at five years, that, um, that captures anyone who might have been displaced during COVID. So, um, so, uh, you know, that takes us back to twenty nineteen, uh, and I think that that would be a reasonable timeframe.
That we have a question about that.
Um, Councilmember Whitman and then Mayor Protem.
Yeah, if I, if I understand this, um, we can redesign that preference, uh, each time we have a project that we approve?
We'd have to rewrite the policy, but.
Right.
So the approach here is adopt a policy at the council level, and then staff work with the developers as we go to approve how they're going to mechanically comply with that policy.
Okay, so.
And then, of course, council could approve something as exempt.
Yeah, okay, so my thoughts about, uh, I do think we should adopt this tonight.
And I should note on that front, it's introduction, it is an ordinance that requires two meetings.
So we're not adopting it.
But it's moving forward, so being introduced tonight, adopted next time.
Yeah, so, um, I think that the issue of, um, capturing people who have been forced out of the community and are now somewhere else is not just how long ago were they forced out, but it's how long did they live in Ojai?
Yes.
So I don't, I don't want to, I don't want to give a preference to somebody who lived here for a year. I, I want to give preference to somebody who may have lived here, you know, I'd say ten years.
Yeah.
And then.
That was my intention.
And then depending on, you know, depending on how many years potentially, you know, affect how far back you can go to qualify them. I do also, though, like the idea of giving preference to current Ojai residents first, because we're trying to keep people housed here in the community. And, um, I, you know, as far as, as far as people who are currently working here but aren't residents here, um, I would love to see us figure out how to get the employers involved in, uh, in helping us provide them with housing solutions, because, uh, I mean, I always think towards the idea that the people who live here are paying the taxes, our taxes are going into supporting, even if it's a nonprofit that comes in, we're still paying for infrastructure when we, you know, build, we gotta, we gotta have streets, we gotta have, um, uh, water, you know, whatever, we have to deal with all of that stuff. So, um, uh, those are my comments.
Okay, uh, it's Mayor Protem's turn.
Oh, I think.
Can I ask a quick clarifying question?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, just a quick.
That's good. So would we have any, uh, potential litigation issues if we were to prioritize local residents over the sphere of influence, or is that close enough to, to say? Because that's why we initially expanded the sphere of influence to keep us safe from, you know, fed fair housing laws. And so I just want to check back in with you before we move on.
Yeah, I mean, the concern is our demographics are very.
Right.
Of a certain sort. And that's, would be the concern. I think there's, it's not indefensible if it's city first, then sphere, then area of interest, but it's more defensible if it's all of those equal.
Okay, so that's just something we have to grapple with.
Something to bear in mind is part of the risk analysis.
Okay, thank you. And I didn't mean to interrupt, I just wanted to clarify.
Yeah, so my, your, your excellent point about, uh, getting the employers involved. So the school district, right, is looking at housing in their buildings. And then at one point, the Ojai Valley Inn was supposed to build, uh, housing for the employers, but they wiggled out of it by getting those apartments on, um, uh, what's it called, Country Club Drive, and they displaced the tenants that were in there to put their people in there. So we don't want to make that mistake again, but we can go back and have another conversation, find out how many people are commuting to the Ojai Valley Inn at whatever their wages are, and then they're taking a bus home at night and, uh, or driving. So these are issues that we need to grapple with, and I'm sure that the Oaks Hotel would love to have a conversation with us about providing housing for their employers. So that's just a statement I wanted to make.
Okay.
Well, um, thank you, colleagues, for your insights, and I'd like to thank, um, Councilmember Rule for bringing this to our attention and doing the research, and, um, so thank you. And, um.
My pleasure.
And I'd also like to thank the comments from Larry and Bill and Nora and Andy to pass this, or to at least introduce it tonight, and we can always, um, you know, we can wiggle with it in the future, but the intent is really good. And of course, once again, it comes back to taking care of people who really need to be taken care of here, and, um, these are our community, uh, members. And, um, yes, current Ojai residents first, I think that's a good idea, and five years seems like pretty reasonable. Um, but let's not delay, I would say, and, um, yeah, it's, it's another thing we can do to help. So is anybody ready for a motion? Are you ready?
Yeah, um, I want some assistance from Matt, because I think he pointed out, uh, Councilmember Rule appropriately brought up the issue, and Matt addressed it, which is that if we put a firm preference for residents, we potentially are going to be sued for unfair housing, uh, or, you know. for unfair housing, uh, or, you know, some type of discrimination. I mean, I had a conversation with Steve Bennett about this issue before this was adopted, and he said, you know, you can't give preferen, you'll get sued if you give preference to your local residents, but the developers, wrong term, whatever the housing project is, they do have a certain amount of flexibility to, you know, in their selection process. But, uh, I think we have, I think we have to let Matt look at the extent to which we can incorp, we can weight it towards, uh, the residence factor. I mean, I'm kind of envisioning like the, the lot, NBA lottery where, you know, you get a certain number of balls depending upon, you know, how many years you, you, you've lived here, or, uh-
My suggestion would be that we not micromanagement, micromanage it at that level.
Right.
I think the, the, if we get, if we design the, the fourteen-page handbook for the lottery, we invite risk.
Yeah.
I think adopt a policy statement at the council level, and then the details will come project by project.
Okay.
Would be my strong recommendation.
So what does the policy-
So your motion-
...statement need to say that, um, that allows you to draft the language that, um, provides us the most protection from unfair claims while still trying to weight this towards our city residents?
I'm not sure that we can have a straight weight for city residents over area of interest. I would recommend that we keep that equal.
Okay.
That's the most defensible approach.
But isn't that what the bill is?
Then we should do that.
Isn't that what this is? SB six-four-nine, that's what the bill is?
The difference is between local versus city resident.
Supporting local tenant preferences.
What does local mean?
Oh, okay.
What does the word local mean? That's the, that's the issue.
Okay.
Is local the four square miles, or is local the valley?
Well, is, is, yes.
Well, it is the valley.
Right, and Caltrans was suggesting maybe we make it just the city. That invites some risk on the federal for housing laws, and my recommendation would be keep it at the valley.
Yes.
Yeah, I agree with that recommendation.
And I hear you're accepting that.
I'm fine with that.
Okay.
Okay, who would like to make a motion?
Leslie should make it.
I'd like to make a motion, okay. I make a motion that we adopt with the adaptations and modifications that we have spoken of, and, um, I'm sure that either Matt or Wes can enumerate them, and, and that we move forward with, uh, passing this. Okay, is there a second?
I'll second it.
All right, um, roll call, please, Weston.
Yeah, I'd just like for the record to state, state the three parts, the, the live, work, and displaced.
So as I understand it, the motion, the adjustments are as follows, the two simple ones first. Section four, evidence of residency is the area of interest or sphere of influence, not the city. Section six, uh, replace fair for affordable in that last sentence. Um, and the larger point for section three in the policy, that it be revised to be the two-step, uh, current Ojai area of interest or sphere of influence, uh, residents first. Second preference, um, persons who work in, in the area or sphere of influence or who were displaced from it within the past five years, and who meet the other income qualifications, et cetera.
But I'd like to tag on and lived, I'd either say five years or ten years, it lived at least five years or lived at least ten years in Ojai.
Ten, ten.
Okay, good, well, that, that actually is my preference, too.
Or more, ten or more.
Okay, lived at least ten years, yeah, that's fine.
Okay, all right, roll call, please, Weston.
Yes.
Councilmember Lang?
Yes.
Mayor Stix?
Yes.
Councilmember Rule?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitman?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Francina?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, all right, motion passes, five-zero. Um, okay, uh, council, we do have one more item. Uh, we generally don't start new items after ten o'clock, it's, uh-
After ten-thirty.
I thought it was ten. So it's totally, um, how-
Well, you know, we have people waiting for this item.
I see that, so, uh-
Mayor, council, we may be able to handle this one fairly quickly.
Okay, let's go, I'm up for it.
But I defer to the council, of course.
Yeah, this is just-
The, I, this is a, is-
Yeah, yeah. And thank you all for, for enduring. You're still here. Yay! Okay, all right, so item number five, uh, discussion, proposed twenty-five miles per hour citywide speed limit. Um, could we have the staff report?
Very brief staff report on this one, standing in, as is perhaps obvious for Mark, um, although the report reflects the memo that I, that I and my team wrote, I can't take all the credit. Um, the gist of this here is state law allows for lower speed limits in certain circumstances. They could be summarized as, um, school zones, hospital zones, um, certain local streets that have neat size requirements, uh, and new law allows for additional lower speed limits in, quote, "safety corridors," as defined by Caltrans, areas with, that are adjacent to land or facilities that generate high concentrations of bicyclists or pedestrians, particularly those from vulnerable pedestrian groups, which is children, seniors, persons with disabilities, et cetera. And then areas where the highway is contiguous to a, a local business activity district, meets some size and shape requirements, um, and has sort of a, uh, three of the following four criteria. Half, half of the fronting property is retailer dining, commercial establishments with, that open directly onto the sidewalks, parking space along the highway, traffic signals or stop signs at, at certain intervals, and crosswalks not controlled by a traffic control device, just marked. Subject to precision, um, most of the VMU, the C-one and the BP zones fit those requirements. Staff recommends that the council authorize staff to hire a, a consulting traffic engineer to assess in detail the areas of the city, the new laws, and run the math, run the matrix, to figure out where can we lower the speed limit, and, uh, to what level, and with what supporting documents. And then not to do it yet, but to come back to the council with a plan for here's what we can do, here's what we can, here's what we can't, and here's how to do it, and a budget, and a scope of work, and then return that to the council for, um, consideration and authorization to go do the work. So it'd be approval of, I'd recommend, uh, Mark says almost up to thirty thousand for the traffic consultant to do the first, the first piece of the work, which would be to develop the plan for where we might be able to do it, and then the, uh, the second piece would be to approve, yeah, go forth and conquer, um, and lower this, maybe not conquer, bad phrase, go forth and lower speed limits.
Who are we hiring for this?
We don't have a consultant developed yet. It would be to direct staff to go, uh, find appropriate consultants.
Okay, all right.
It would be a consulting traffic engineer would be the professional. We don't have a specific person in mind yet.
Okay.
Can I ask, yeah, we're on questions for, for-
So, so, so we're, if we hire him, we don't necessarily ha, or her, we don't necessarily have to do what they recommend.
Absolutely.
Because they could be very old school, they could not have children or dogs or any experience or walking, you know, obviously, it was the traffic engineers who caused these problems.
It, certainly, certainly sta, and most of it was also state law. Certainly, uh, staff would identify consultants that understand and are familiar with, uh, these new laws, and not just, uh, apply the old rules.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions? Uh, Councilmember Lang?
Yes, um, if, so I'm thinking about the cost of the traffic engineer. Um, is there a world in which we could, we could do this by public survey instead of by hiring a traffic engineer? For example, getting the community involved in letting us know what streets are affected, um, you know, who, who identifies prob, we've had so many people come and talk about the traffic on their streets. Is there a world in which we could avoid that thirty thousand dollar expense and, and do this internally?
I'm not sure that that world exists, and the reason is, for some of these requirements, we still have to have a speed survey, and then we, we tear off of that, lower, not higher. Um, and for others of these areas, the fact that the residents have a lived experience of, uh, high levels of, of speed and high levels of, um, unsafe traffic is in itself a part of the statutory criteria. So we would need, um, to develop professional evidence. We could look at what we can do within-house staff, but as you know, our in-house staff is severely limited.
There's, there's one other issue, too, and that is that you can be sued for an accident caused by setting your speed limit incorrectly, but it, you can, you can be sued for setting the wrong speed limit if it ca, and, you know, argued that you caused the accident by setting the wrong speed limit. But if you have an engineer study it and then set that limit, we're primarily immune from that.
Yeah, we tap into design immunity on that front.
Okay, that's worth thirty thousand.
Okay, all right.
It is worth thirty thousand.
Um, we're still on questions, Mayor Protem, you have a question?
Yeah, but are, are we, the, the goal is, I mean, we, we know the streets that are problematic, we already know.
Yeah.
Right? I mean, I know it by heart, 'cause we've been working, some of us have been working on this for about twenty years, that we've stood on the corner and the past public works people were working on it, so, but we're, now we're gonna make a fresh start, we're really gonna do it. Okay.
I, I think the reality on that front is, it's not, we don't know which streets are the problem, it's which of these laws can we use to attack which of those streets? How do we, um, how do we fit these sort of, to use an analogy, the law has given us a number of new keys. We need to identify which keys fit into the locks we have, which are our streets, and how we can use this key for that lock and that key, that key for that lock, uh, if that makes sense. Maybe that's a little broken. Um, the other piece I would note is, I think that part of this process will absolutely include a robust public engagement and public-
Yes.
And that was, I should have noted also in the staff report, is an outreach plan and an engagement plan. A, make sure that we cover as much as we can cover, and some of this might be, uh, that solutions other than lowering the speed limit are applicable for a given street. Um, there's lots of, we all know the, the menu of, of speed calm, traffic calming options, and those may make, may make sense for other streets. Hey, we looked at this street, we can't lower the speed limit, but we can do this instead. Um, and the staff report also notes that Kiama is one that's, I think, already, uh, under analysis, and again, would be part of this puzzle. And we can name the other streets, um, all your major streets, really. And then the only other thing to note, that I should have noted, the same laws apply to Caltrans for Ojai Avenue, Maricopa Highway, but we can't force them, it's a request.
Right, well, shall we move on? Let's move on to public comment. Um, first we have Larry Steingold, then Bill Miley, then Tina Brummond.
Larry Steingold, Ojai resident, I feel like I should be up there. Um, no, I don't think so.
You might get your chance someday.
No, 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 no.
Be careful what you wish for.
If you establish the baseline of twenty-five miles an hour for the whole city, and then go, okay, Grand Avenue is already thirty. The Arbolata should be fifteen or twenty, whatever that is. Everything else is twenty-five.
Yes.
Okay, I mean, where else is there? I mean, maybe Bryant could be twenty for trucks and stuff, but it doesn't matter, it's twenty-five, it's not gonna go any higher except for one road, which is Grand, unless they repave it.
Wait, are you saying it's that-
No, I mean, Grand's already thirty miles an hour.
Yes, okay.
Everywhere else is twenty-five, except for Daly, which is thirty, and then some mix and match, and then the Arbolata. And then everybody else can come here and say, hey, my street's really bad, lower it to twenty, and here are all the neighbors, and here are all the reasons. But vote on establishing a baseline of saying, okay, citywide twenty-five, and then we'll adapt it as we go forward, after the study, after the, just like everybody else.
Yeah.
But just pass a law, or pass a, whatever you wanna pass, and just get it done and move forward, because what we're doing is spinning wheels. Right? Oh, and more traffic bumps, 'cause that's what's gonna happen, or traffic pillows.
Thank you, Larry. Uh, next we have Bill Miley, then Tina Brummond, and then Delaney Labar.
Hello, for the record, my name is Bill Miley. I have read the new state law and the administrative commentary. I know about research studies showing less damage to pedestrians, motorists, and others when speeds are lowered. You don't die as often when you're hit at twenty miles an hour than when you're hit at forty. Ojai is a small city with narrow streets, narrow streets in places, park guards on both sides of neighborhood streets, sightlines and passing distances can be closed. Downtown Matilla Street is risky, parking, cross, crossing pedestrians, including crossing at non-crosswork places, corner parking lot congestion, and a north signal entrance to the parking lot. I support the proposed plan for a highway street engineering study, and certainly support making our overall speed limit twenty-five miles an hour. Grand Avenue should be maxed at twenty-five, Maricopa at thirty. Ground Avenue from Grand to Ojai Avenue at twenty, it's a very narrow street, I drive it all the time, at twenty-two miles an hour. The Grand Avenue Park Road intersection, you know, just north of Sarrazo di Park, is still, at uncertain times, very dangerous. Recently, I was in my car at the stop sign on Park Road going north, stopped, when a pickup truck going west from Gridley drove through the stop sign at full speed. And it's been going on for years, on occasion. Damn. So let's make our city safer for all. And, based on commentary just recently, ten, five minutes ago, please don't move ahead with just council members' opinions. The goal is to make Ojai streets safer. It needs to be a traffic engineer, it's a science, and it needs to be objective. Please hire a traffic engineer. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Next we have Tina Brummond, then Delaney Labar, and then Doug Labar.
Hello, um, I'm here to talk about traffic. I am a resident of Creek Road, not of the city, but the city travels through Creek Road to get to the city. I've had ongoing problems in dealing with the county, so I'm actually gonna surprise all of you. I am not in su, support of this, because this just pushes the problem elsewhere, so we need to take a step back. We have a true issue in Ojai, in the entire Valley, Valley, and it's a couple-fold. First is, back in the eighties, when we moved away from city police and had a contract with the sheriff's department, we've carved out the amount of money that we pay, and the sheriff's department does not provide services for traffic enforcement. So it doesn't really matter what speed limit you make the traffic, right? It doesn't matter what you post it, when no one tickets it. That's not their responsibility, because you're not paying them for it. Pay them for the service, they'll enforce the speed, whatever it is. But when the city negotiates a contract back in the eighties and carves it out, we don't have that enforcement service. So this stuff is lip service. It's lip service. What we really have going on right now is, from my understanding, an entire valley-wide traffic study that was conducted by Autozone in Oakview. Yeah, huh. I understand that they're actually suing the county to overturn the entire Ojai area plan so that commercial businesses in the Ojai Valley no longer require a traffic survey in order for their business to be considered to go in or not. I'm confirming that that lawsuit, we're at that point with the county, but that is my understanding, and it should be shocking to all of you, just like I'm seeing on your face, Rachel, because I have brought this before the city, nothing has been done. I just got cursed out by Matt Lavier at the last MAC meeting where the Highway Patrol was present. It would have been lovely if he would have been there, right? But I had Matt Lavier seriously curse at me in that meeting, and the reason why is, we just had a guy from Oakview, a normal husband guy, going to meet his wife at Sakura in Ojai, crashes on a motorcycle, he has no recollection, he's a family guy. I got this, two phone calls. Hey, Tina, somebody called, they want me to tell you about this accident. He crashed right by your house. He was a normal husband man that said, hey, I'll meet you over here. He doesn't know if he got run off the road where the Druckers live and somebody went over the lane. over the lane. He doesn't know if he accidentally hit some, some gravel. But that man, first of all, he's doing property damage. He's almost taking out their water tank. He is doing damage, not of his fault, right? But we are going to go with it, we think, right now, and this is a legal problem that is caused by Ojai. Thank you.
Thank you, Tina.
Tina, uh, Tina? Let me know what you find out about what's going on with that litigation?
I will.
Okay, thanks.
Yes, please do. Thank you, Tina. Uh, next we have Delaney Labar and then Doug Labar.
Good evening, Delaney Labar. I live up the street. I thought the Green Coalition was starting the evening, so I was going to tell you that coincidentally, it was at the Green Coalition's, um, the World Cafes that they were doing about imagining Ojai and what changes and improvements we might like, that it was Doug who actually proposed the, I mean, I'm sure other people may have, but in that context, he proposed, uh, the twenty-five mile an hour. And the reason is, he and I, uh, have a property up in a little town called Port Townsend, Washington, and so we're up there a lot. And they have a citywide twenty-five mile an hour. And when you first get into town, it's like, it takes you a little while to make that adjustment, you know, because you're still going fast, you're wanting to get to your hotel, or whatever you're, you know, you're up to. Um, but what happens is, I am me, I'm not a really patient person in my life, and yet I find that really, within just a matter of hours, I've completely decompressed and relaxed, and it affects my entire time there. It affects the way I conduct business, the way I do, you know, the socializing, all of that gets impacted by that, and it is so lovely. It is so, because the sense of relaxation, um, just extends everywhere. It also protects the deer up there, which the deer have kind of, they run the show up there, they, you know, over everybody's lawns and everything, so they don't want to have deer accidents. We don't have that problem, fortunately. But Port Townsend, like Ojai, is very similar to Ojai. It ha, it's a small town, it's a, you know, Port Townsend is to Seattle what Ojai is to LA. And the streets, it's a hundred-year-old, two, a hundred-and-fifty-year-old town, so the streets are narrower, they don't all have sidewalks, in fact, you know, really, that's just in the most commercial part of town. Everywhere else, there's no sidewalks, and, um, lots of kids and dogs. And so, um, pedestrians and bicycles share the road, just like they do here. It's natural traffic calming. You don't have to do bulbouts and all of that expensive stuff. It just naturally slows everybody down. I'm on Blanche here. We have a sidewalk on one side of the street and not on our side of the street, and it works just fine. It, people, I mean, drivers automatically know to slow down when there are people in the street. It's not, you know, it, it, they're not in the middle of the street, they're on the sides, everybody knows. So I just wanted to say, and also, we have a, we have situations of where cars are really racing from one spot to another, and this would slow that down. So people, uh, people will complain, they always do, um, especially when there's change, but I say, if we make it safer and calmer, we actually are who we say we are. And I'll end with the bumper sticker I saw last week, which was great, that said, um, don't try to change Ojai, let Ojai change you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Delaney. Uh, next we have Doug Labar.
Well, she just stole my thunder. I'm Doug Labar, resident of the city of Ojai. And I really hope that this issue doesn't get, uh, passed on to, um, traffic engineers and public works. Just pass something. I've spent a fair amount of time in a small community in the shadow of the Olympic Mountains in the state of Washington. It has a population of a little over ten thousand residents and is located about two hours from the big urban city of Seattle. Its name is Port Townsend. The reason I spend time there is because of how I feel when I'm there. The pace is slow, the feeling is relief of stress. It is beautiful, uncrowded, and peaceful. It has a striking architecture in the town center, and it has a lot of well-attended public events throughout the year. The speed limit is twenty-five miles per hour throughout the entire town. I learned this at a cost. But I came to realize that the town-wide speed limit is an essential part of what makes it so desirable to spend time there. Actually, the speed limit through the town center is fifteen miles per hour. But also, throughout the residential areas, at twenty-five miles per hour, one has time to observe the comings and goings of life in a slowed-down community. Bicycle lanes are common, walking is popular and safer, and deer walk frilly about, undisturbed by drivers. It is a place to unwind from the frantic pace of Seattle. I cannot help but draw a parallel to the proximity of Ojai to the big urban city of Los Angeles. For most of our visitors come from LA, so I suggest that we make a bold change citywide. Let's give those visitors, visiting Ojai, the very thing they came here for, and the residents as well. Slow down the speed everyone is accustomed to moving at, and to experience the nurturing that the nest can give them. After all, isn't that the, why we're here and why they come here?
Thank you, Doug.
Something, Doug, may I ask? Doug, Doug, can, did you send this as a public comment yet?
Sorry?
I would like a copy of what you just read, so I'm asking if you sent it as a, but can you also send it, I'll, I'm going to ask Delaney to send it by email, and I encourage you to send it as a letter to the editor. It's wonderful. Thank you.
Um, any comments online, Weston?
Yes, Mayor, and to the public, that material received at the DICE, I'll include that with our written public comments posted online. Uh, we have written. Okay.
Thank you, Weston.
We have Renee. Renee, you have the floor.
Hi, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Um, yes, um, thank you very much, everybody, for putting this on the agenda. Uh, Doug and Delaney, that was beautifully said. I really appreciate this idea that we can make Ojai a destination and stand for something that is really good for our children, our residents, something that we can all be proud of when people come to Ojai. They can breathe, take a big breath, and say, you've arrived, you're here, you can slow down now. Um, and I think it, we've talked about this for years and years, uh, on the Complete Streets Committee with Kathy, uh, there's been many, Kathy Nolan was looking at how we could develop a campaign where everybody could get behind this. It's really in everybody's best interest to learn how to slow down. I've been doing it intentionally as I drive down the highway, and, you know, I've actually had people, it's so rude, people who will pass me in the middle lane, just go zimmit, zipping by me to, as if they can make a statement. I can go faster than you, you old pokey lady. And it's so rude, it's so insulting. And I, I just think we need to stand for something in a really big way, and this is the way to do it. I really appreciate this being on the agenda. Thank you, Mark Scott. I'm sorry that you're not here to see this or be a part of this, but this really could make a big difference in all of our lives with bicycles and pedestrian safety, et cetera, et cetera. So thank you, I hope you pass this tonight. I'm not sure about all the studies, you guys can figure that out. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Renee. That's it, Weston?
That's all, Mayor.
Okay, we will move on to discussion. Who would like to begin?
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion.
Okay, sure.
Um, I'd like to make a motion that the, we were, um, that we retain the services of a consulting traffic engineer to work with public works and police sheriff staff to identify streets eligible for these reductions, to prepare a specific recommendation for implementation to the city council, as well as an appropriate community outreach plan if there is time and effort to do that, that can be a phase two. Identify additional signage that should be installed concurrent with establishing these new speed limits, and prepare a community pride campaign that supports and connects this public safety issue initiative. I think that those can be phase two. Yeah, exactly. Just really hire the traffic engineer and get this moving.
Is there a second?
I would second it.
Okay.
But you're going to make a friendly amendment?
Yes. Uh, it, can we word this so that it's clear that the goal i- is a twenty-five mile per hour citywide without exception or less, uh, uh, the narrow streets like Arbolata, you know, where it's appropriate? The reason, and I mean, I can, the rationale.
Yes, that can be done.
Is to make sure there's no confusion when you're in the city limit, that's the speed limit, and that will, uh, I've, I've tried very hard to get that done on Grand Avenue, because that's, Grand Avenue in a way sets the tone when, because they're already going to, if they go twenty-five and then they turn into residential streets, they're already used to it, you know, so hopefully that will have a calming effect. But that's the, if council is agreeable, that that's the, the goal, you know? And I, we have all these great, uh, what do you call that, slogans? Twenty is plenty, twenty-five saves lives. And I know that Jamie from the Chamber, he'll help promote it, you know, on the Chamber website. And, um, and then I wanted to make a comment, um, about the, uh, you know, I want to go back to T- Tina Brown, because my heart goes out to all the residents on Creek Road. We've been trying to get the county to calm the traffic there for the last eight years, since twenty, I think it was twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen, I went with her to the county, and we're trying. We're not going to give up. But, you know, ideally, this would be valley-wide, it would be highly controversial, I'm sure, all the people, you know, but the fact is, on Creek Road, bears been killed, a cougar was killed in Oakview, you know, we have so few. Uh, deer are killed in, on Creek Road, and, and those are the larger animals. Tons of small animals are killed on our streets every single day, both wild and domestic. And I can, I can't even begin to tell you the stories. If I'd been going faster than twenty-five, the things I would have killed that I didn't kill, you know, including a whole family of quail crossing the street, I could see them on Creek Road, and I thought, what the heck is that? They're so little, and the mother and the father were going to sacrifice their life. It was so mo, so, it was so moving. I stopped my car, and thankfully, nobody was behind me, and they crossed. But if I'd been going any faster, I would have killed a whole bunch, probably. So, yeah, there's so many reasons to do this.
Yes, agreed. Well, thank you, uh, Councilmember Whitman, do you want to say something?
Yeah, um, I think that Tina made an important point.
Yeah.
And that is that if we don't combine the traffic, uh, the speed reduction with actual traffic enforcement.
Yes.
Then, um, we're not going to be effective. And if you want to get everybody to get, you know, we're going to have to invest some money in, you know, may, somebody can give us, uh, recommendations about how to do that, to get, how do you best get the message out to the community to go slower? I've, I've also experienced the thing where I'm on a residential street and going twenty miles per hour to be respectful, and someone passes me.
Yes, yes.
Uh, so, there is, you know, part of this, and, um, Mark added item four to this list. I mean, the, we, we need to, I think we do need to do a certain amount of public service, uh, communications about being, uh, polite to your neighbors, especially when you're driving through their neighborhoods. Uh, Betsy and I met with Mark and with a whole bunch of neighbors from the Quiama, um, which has become, uh, what, Creek Road, uh, secondary. If they're not, if they're not avoiding Ojai Avenue to go on Creek Road, they're avoiding it by going on Quiama. And actually, there's other streets. Well, um, we're just going to continue dealing with that, so we, it's a, it's kind of a community-wide thing. I agree a hundred percent with, um, what Delaney and Doug said, that it would be nice if we could kind of develop a culture of going slower. But we do have to have the engineer.
Right.
Tell us that it's safe to do it, and then, and then we can do it.
Sounds like we all agree that we want.
We all agree.
We all want slow high.
That's what I was just going to say, we could have a bumper sticker.
Slow high.
Slow high.
All right, well, we have a motion and we have a second, so could we have the roll call, please, Weston?
Yes, and I did see consensus for that amendment to include.
I did as well.
Okay, great.
The goal is, is twenty-five citywide, uh, and in, as noted, to include an assessment of enforcement.
Great, thank you. Roll call. Councilmember Whitman?
Yes.
Councilmember Lang?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Francina?
Yes.
Councilmember Rule?
Yes.
Mayor Sticks?
Yes, motion passes, five oh. And, uh, that's five motions, five oh. Wow, this might be a record.
That is.
It's pretty impressive.
You have so many applicants.
Well, thank you for, thank you for, uh, being here. And, uh, we will move on to council member reports. Any council member have anything to report?
I can never remember.
No. Um, well, I would just, a big shout-out to the Film Festival. It was a really beautiful event, and those who were able to attend, and, um, a lot of work and a lot of thought went into that. Um, I attended the Help of Ojai Annual Board Meeting and Luncheon last week, and, uh, it's just so impressive, the amount of work and, um, service that they provide for our community, so it was very heartwarming.
Do you want to discuss the, the request for this ordinance?
Okay, yeah, no, got the, okay, so we're, um, let's go to city manager's report? Anything to, you're it, Carl.
I wasn't getting away without saying anything tonight.
No way.
Nothing to report. Thank you to the Sheriff's Department for hosting a great emergency preparedness meeting with our city staff to get everyone up to speed. The mayor was there, I was impressed, she carries a gavel wherever she goes.
Well.
To call it to order.
Mayor on the go.
To the council, look forward to working with you closely in the next few weeks at a minimum. Um, also, it's, it has been great to be here, working both with James and with Mark. It's been maybe fifteen years since I got to work with Mark when he was in Burbank, um, but a legend in the profession, so I enjoyed the time that I got to, to have with him here. Um, as I'm sure you all know, the city staff is small, um, but mighty. Um, I think I was coming in this morning, you can hardly see through the door, there's so many notices on the front window. But I was looking, we had five public meetings in four days this week.
Yeah.
So that's just a lot of work there, including the day-to-day things and the follow-up that comes out of those meetings. But, um, the staff across the board I've met with in the different departments, um, they're, they're really all in. And I look forward to look, working more closely with them. So a great team and echo the county. I've always been impressed with the county fire and Sheriff's Department, um, the resources that they have to offer us and the knowledge base they have there. They've been a pleasure to work with as well. And, uh, ditto for Matt and his firm. Thank you.
Well, thank you for being here, Carl.
Yeah, Carl, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Carl.
Looking forward to your service.
All right, let's look at, uh, future agenda items, okay?
I've got, I've got two. I've been burning. So I do want to... I want to come back with this resolution. But I would like to take it a step further. You know, I have mentioned that I am very interested in adding a future agenda item of making a peace commission or a peace committee. And I know that that's not realistic, and I haven't had a lot of support for that. So what I would like to propose instead is I will be happy to do all the legwork on two different things that ideally a peace committee would do. One, I'd like to come back with... Working with staff on a revised version of this, taking it to the next level so that we have a peace policy. That anytime there is something that we want to respond to, we have a protocol to follow as a discussion. I would like to bring back a discussion point and some language for that. And I'd love to do that within the next two weeks before the next meeting, if there is support for that, so that we can respond to the... To the... I'm sorry, I just... This is... It's, you know, it's a little...
Speakers.
Yeah. Yeah. So I'd like to do some of the heavy lifting on that. And then, two, I would also like to come back sooner rather than later with an ethics protocol or with some basic language to bring back a discussion for a code of ethics for the council and for staff. I've looked at some other cities' language for what they've... What others are doing. I think it's really important in light of everything that's going on. I think it's really important for keeping the peace in on this dais. So I'd like to bring this back within the next two weeks if staff... If I can work with staff to do that and if my fellow council members would trust me to do that. And then I'd also like to work on the... Bring back the ethics... A discussion on ethics, on an ethics policy.
So I... I'm in favor of us saying something as a city about death and violence that we've been experiencing. I do have concerns that whatever we say, we incorporate, you know, people like what Larry Steinwald had to say...
100%.
What Ray Powers had to say. It seems like there's a way to say it where you're not excluding anybody's viewpoint because we may... People will disagree about, you know, who's right and who's wrong or whatever else. But I think probably everybody agrees that people should stop dying. Killing and dying. So I think it's a really difficult task for you to thread that needle. But I'm sure you're the right person to do it.
I am a Libra.
But good luck. Feel free to talk to me if you're... But certainly talk to other community members about how to say it in the right way.
I would love to... I would love to... For anyone who spoke tonight to, you know, to talk with them as well. But I agree with you, you know, to Larry's point, this isn't... We're not... And to Ray's point, we're not... I think we need to make a statement of who we are as a city of peace. And any killing of innocent lives and children especially, we just... We have to... We can't sit back and watch that happen.
Councilmember Rule?
Yeah, I'm... I don't want to really expand this out because I realize that it's really time-sensitive. I mean, you know, as people noted, you know, it's... It's... Death is, you know, it's minute by minute. But what do you think about having some sort of workshop? Where, you know, it's a community conversation, but we move forward? You know, we have that community conversation. And, you know, I don't know whether it's you prep a document of some sort...
That's what my plan was.
And then we go into a community conversation? And then, you know, we move... We move, right?
That was my plan. My plan wasn't to draft an ordinance. It was to draft enough of something to where we can have a discussion and move forward in a public hearing.
Yeah, and I think sooner. I mean, I would be willing to, you know... I like my time not here, but I would be willing to come here at the earliest convenience to have this conversation and to move this forward because I think, as we heard from the folks, you know, their hearts are breaking and people are dying. And so as our community, we should be... I think we should be moving as quickly as we possibly can.
And I'm happy to have a special meeting as well. I didn't push it because next week's Thanksgiving and we have a lot going on in the city right now and we're very short on staff. I didn't push it. But if my fellow council members want to do a special meeting, we can... I'd be very happy with that decision.
When were you thinking? Wait just one second.
I mean, next week at some point? I mean, next week's Thanksgiving, so I don't know if that's...
I think if we can get this resolution, that...
Let's start there.
It's already written and adopted at the next meeting. That would be the Tuesday after Thanksgiving. And the fourth Tuesday.
Yes, the... I mean, I'd be fine with that, too.
That sounds good.
I mean, are you thinking of something simple that we... If Matt is available, that we just...
Let's give Matt a break. Matt has been working really hard.
Whatever the council wants will make happen. I would know. We already have on the books a meeting for the 28th. That may provide the time for the conversations to look at the language between now and then. That may be wise.
It's time and three-quarters if you ask to work on Thanksgiving.
And I'd like to thank Councilmember Lang for jumping in there and working on this. And also so many members of our community for showing up and speaking out for peace. And peace is a practice. It's an everyday practice. So thank you all for representing that. And the whole, you know, you all spoke so beautifully, you know, about the radical empathy and that we just need to... We need to stand up as a city of peace. So thank you all.
And how do you all feel about the ethics, the code of ethics as a discussion point, looking at some samples?
Well, hang on. Are you thinking that you could fit that in?
Not in two weeks. Not in two weeks. That would be like two months. Yeah, exactly.
Because we do have a long list of priorities.
And we have some time-sensitive things, like the pickleball MOU runs out December 31st. We have to get that on the... Are you receipt... Yeah, you are. I saw your name on it.
So, yeah. I would say pickleball is not, but whatever. I know it's time-sensitive to a few people. You know, relative to the kinds of things that we're talking about. We have been talking about an ethics workshop and the fact that we have to prioritize that. We have to be really clear. We've been talking about that since our first meeting. And to me, it has to happen. You know, I don't... So I would say that was a very high priority.
I only mentioned it because of the MOU running out.
Okay, well, we have a... I'm pretty sure we have a pretty full agenda for the 28th. So can we...
My suggestion, if I could jump in briefly. The peace resolution, however, it will come out of that process for the 28th as discussed. The ethics workshop proposal to then develop for then council to approve and go from there, that strikes me as a December meeting item. Giving staff time to sit down and work with Councilmember Lang and anyone else on what that looks like. And then I don't... I'm not sure about the pickleball item timing. The MOU expiring doesn't trigger...
Anything.
That can just expire.
Except for potential...
It doesn't trigger... It doesn't require us to do anything to extend it.
On city property.
Yeah.
But it opens us up for potential litigation with the residents, the neighbors.
If they choose to sue us. If they choose to sue us, you know? I mean, it's a threat of litigation. We can go into closed session. But, I mean, it doesn't open us up to litigation anymore than... You know, anybody can sue us, so.
Until we agendize it, but we do.
My suggestion is let's defer to our newly... New acting city manager on the timing on pickleball. But certainly, I think everyone understands that sooner or later, that has to be resolved. And I know there were discussions just on Monday. Mark was in a meeting with the county on that one. So I'm aware of that meeting. He had... He was... He left us information about it. So it's in process.
Okay, all right. Well, thank... Are we ready?
Well, I have... I would like to put back on the agenda recording closed sessions. I would like to revisit that for various reasons. So that. And also, I would like... We've talked about having the 2-2 committee and getting that started. And we kind of said, "Well, it'd be better, you know, we can all meet together." But, you know, both of the, you know, the school...
What's a 2-2 committee?
For the school district.
For the school district. But I'm, you know, the... Given that the holidays are coming and all of that, and it doesn't look like we're going to be able to get all of the trustees and all of us together for a meeting, I would rather move forward with getting the 2-2 committee started and then, you know, working it so that we have a meeting with all of us. I mean, we have, right now, on the books, we have an art commission meeting with us. We have a historic preservation committee meeting with us. Doesn't mean we need to prioritize those over a school trustee meeting. But I would like... I've been talking about this for months and months and months about, you know, getting the 2-2 committee together. And I would like to move that forward and not have it reliant upon, you know, us first meeting with them. Because I don't see what the point is to make that happen before a 2-2, honestly. So because that's going to take a while. You know, we're already booked up through December and January. So I would rather have the 2-2 start. That's the normal thing.
There's only two meetings left.
No, no, the 2-2, the 2-2 does... Two of us meet with two of them. It has nothing to do with the council.
Have we reached out to the school board about a joint meeting that we agreed upon doing?
I have not.
Could we... Okay, well, I'm not looking... Could we please do the...
We could always put an item at an upcoming meeting for the council to pick the two who would be our two. That's the piece that we would need to do with the council level is who are our two, and then go make the invite. In the meantime, Carl can make contact with...
Okay.
Yeah, I would like to do that. I think that I would like to get that going because I have been talking about it since February. And it is now almost December.
Okay, all right, well...
If I could clarify one of the reports. So the ethics protocol slash workshop, special meeting, there are groups that do that that we can bring in. But is that something you'd want to invite commissioners to as well? Or would that just be council?
To avoid debating something not on the agenda, I think that's a great question, that I would suggest council consider at a future meeting.
Good idea.
Microphone, please.
I think if we bring it for discussion, then we can... Yeah, yeah, I think... So yes, agree with the city.
Okay, all right. Well, on that note, I think we're set. Yes, Mr. City Attorney?
That's my understanding.
Okay, all right. Well, thank you all for a productive meeting. We are adjourned.